All right, I call to order. All right, if we can call the meeting to order, please. I call to order the January 26, 2023, school board meeting for District 64, Park Ridge Niles. The administration asked the board to go into closed session under 2C1, which is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and under 2C2, which is collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. The board was in closed session for about 15 minutes. Okay, let us take a roll call.
Here.
Waitobich?
Here.
Lubinski's here. Kennedy?
Here.
Riles?
Here.
Pearl?
Here.
Sodos?
Here.
Coram Carey is all our present. Okay, all right, now we will start with the pledge. Leary, can you do the honors, please?
The pledge ranges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as far as opening remarks, I just want to go back to, at the December meeting, the board was going to do the tour of Jefferson, but the board decided to go into closed session. I know some, it seems like some community members were interested in touring Jefferson or the space here, and so the district is planning an open house soon, so stay tuned for that if you'd like to come see the spaces. As this is our first meeting of the new year, the district is certainly in a transition right now. These can be challenging, but let's keep in perspective that we are one community, we are neighbors. At the December meeting, the decorum that we had in here was one of civility and respect, so if we can have that today here in the handy room. And now we will turn our attention to our leaders of Lincoln Middle School to share a spotlight on Lincoln. There we go.
Thank you for the opportunity to be able to present tonight. I know we're at the end of January right now, and typically this is a time when many of us look back at New Year's resolutions and think about, you know, maybe how well they haven't gone. And I'm not going to get into my own personal resolutions or anything here tonight, however, I am going to say that, you know, at this time, it is something that should have been a resolution of mine was just to be a little bit more expressive of my gratitude. So tonight's presentation is more a thank you to some of those individuals at Lincoln that helped make Lincoln the school that it is. So there are some in education that talk about the people, not the programs, making the change in schools. And again, while we have some very strong programs at Lincoln Middle School and here in the district across our middle schools, I definitely want to be able to highlight those people who are behind those programs that really helped get some of this going for not only our staff, but also for our students and community. So tonight is more of a special thanks. Again, it's not going to highlight one particular aspect of our school, but more some of those individuals who bring some of these special aspects to light. I am going to start with interscholastic sports. I know we're in the heart of, we actually, we just finished up one of our seasons right now. We have wrestling going on, girls volleyball is just getting underway. But again, when I look at these sports, not only are the opportunities there for our students, but we have so many people who put in the time to work with our students after school, at their practices, the weekend tournaments, and their commitment not only to these sports helps these programs be successful, but there is huge involvement in these programs. We were successful in some of our conference championships, but I just want to highlight one of our sports in particular, our cross-country, had over 180 students, a school of 750 students that comes out to just shy of about a quarter of our students participating in cross-country. So these programs are built up by the staff that are coaching them, and again, with all of this, I just want to be able to say these people's names, because again, they've put in the time to build up these programs and to talk our students into participating. We find that our students who are more involved are more successful, so Kevin Pankow and Peter Perucci, Jason Quint and Neil Stanov taking on our girls basketball, cross-country, Kaleen Buzerek, Terry Cawkins, Miranda Conley, Jill Groner, Kate May, Michelle Wazaluski. We will have boys volleyball starting up in the spring, Mr. Chris Vanna's taking care of that for us. We also have Kevin Pankow and Peter Perucci and Neil heading out our boys' basketball season, Terry Cawkins, Kate May taking on wrestling and our girls volleyball, Kevin Pankow and Jim Tebow there. So again, without these individuals, we wouldn't have these programs that get our students involved. And again, it is awesome to see some of the, you know, inner-school rivalry that we have here with the school, just on the other side of district office there. Yes?
Can we ask you just to go a little closer to the mic?
Absolutely, I'm a wanderer, I apologize. There we go, look at that.
Go a little rogue.
No worries, no worries, thank you. In addition to our interscholastic sports, we also do have a really strong program in our instrumental music and chorus. You know, between band and orchestra, I think we have over 166 students. That involves rehearsals that start at 7:00 a.m. If you've seen middle school students walking into the building at 7:00 a.m., it's a sight to behold, but again, they are there. The parents are there dropping them off. We've got a great commitment with our band and orchestra students. I did hear a stat that about 92% of our students continue on with their band and orchestra experience over at the high school level, so again, the dedication of our teachers and our staff to be able to get these students to continue with their passions moving forward. I want to tack on chorus as well, and if you add that in there, over 200 students. And again, when we look at these percentages of how many of our students participate in certain things at our school, again, it's really great that we've got these strong programs there, but behind those programs, we do have, all right, so we're skipping ahead here. They said go fast, but I'm not going that fast, all right. You know, Mrs. Hunter and Mr. Yun taking on our band, Ms. Ballinger and Mr. Hellerman taking on orchestra, and Ms. Latrani with our chorus. So again, these individuals, you know, are responsible for being able to bring these opportunities and these experiences to our students on a daily basis, and again, the fact that they continue with those as they move on is what we want in our middle school students. We have our school musical, Ms. Latrani was listed there as well. You know, we do have 100 students who participate in our school musical. This year it is Cinderella, I am going to put in the plug for that, so starting on St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, going through the 19th, there are going to be four performances. Information will be coming out with regard to tickets, but again, this is a really great production. We have students who are involved in the crew, set design, cast, and again, it's really one of these all-inclusive activities at our school that bring, you know, the school together for that. And I do want to thank Ms. Latrani, she's a true joy to work with, she's a wonder, and really gets these students. This is a picture from last year's Annie performance, and again, just a really great job for all of our students there. In addition to what we have, you know, during our school day and as part of our regular curriculum, after-school clubs are a huge part of this. The great thing about the clubs at middle school is that these are student-directed clubs, that they are built on the student interests. When I say that, these students come to different staff members if they have an interest and want to get a club together. This is currently what we're offering, you know, everything from academic supports all the way through world language. We've got gaming clubs, Green Team, GSA. There's really an opportunity for so many students to get involved, even if they're not a larger part of some of the other aspects of our school or our district. So again, you know, with all of that, behind each one of these after-school activities, after the day is over and after the hours are put in, we have staff members who continue to give back to the students and back to the school, and so for all the individuals that we have there, we just want to be, you know, appreciative and thankful for their time and put it in with our students. Let's see if we're going to move forward here, oops. I think we're going to stay here, we're skipping around here, sorry. This is another aspect, and I'm getting back to source, staff-student volleyball. This is something really cool. Every year, our P department puts on a staff-student volleyball game. This isn't staff versus students, it's actually teams that does have a staff representative on each of those teams, so students will ask some of their teachers to be a part of these teams. 23 teams of seven students, we had 161 students participate, 23 staff members, a little bit of a round-robin activity after school as we head up into the winter break. Unfortunately, our team did not win, however, it was still a great time. I've got a group of seventh grade young ladies who hopefully will ask me to be part of their team next year, maybe we can make a run for it. But again, just, this is not only just about the students having opportunities and having fun, you know, our students really do enjoy coming to school, and I think one of the great things that is evident at Lincoln is the connection that our students have with their teachers, and so just to be able to see the fact that we've got this many staff members, being able to participate in the activities with their students and not just leading those out is awesome. It is headed up by our P department, Ms. Baumley, Mr. Caccini, Mr. Chris, Mr. Pankow, and Ms. Peter. Again, without their organization and getting these students organized there, you know, this wouldn't happen. So again, just another opportunity that's available for our students. I do want to highlight our Green Team. This is not only an after-school club, but something that we're working on as an initiative at our school. It is a group that has sought out different grants for different aspects of our sustainable projects at the school. We are a part of Illinois Green Schools Project, where we did win honor, you know, with the, with that organization. We participate in waste audits to see how we're doing with regard to our recycling and sustainability projects, and we've also been able to upgrade some of our recycling and composting resources at the school. This isn't anything that's necessarily coming from me or from the district initiative. Really, back in 2019, my first year with the school, I was approached by two staff members, Andy Durkop and Melissa Johnson, who both came to me with the idea that we really needed to get our project back off the ground, and despite the fact that we went through a couple of years where school looked a little bit different, we were able to get that back into place. So I really want to highlight the work of Melissa Johnson and what she's done. Sorry, I'm just a little bit behind on my button pushing over here. Let's see if we can go back here. Oh, now we're back. Now we're forward. And again, Melissa's been able to do a lot with us, not only in the practices that we have at the school, but also the education of our staff, the education of our students, and the education of our parents, in trying to make sure that what we're doing at Lincoln Middle School is supporting some of those initiatives when it comes down to recycling and sustainability. So again, we've got some sort bins in our cafeteria that she was able to acquire for us to help with our lunch sorting. We've done some waste audits to be able to see if our success is as good as we think it is. We've added different signage and different education for our staff. We do an end-of-the-year supply collection to make sure that we're continuing to give those supplies back instead of just throwing them away. And again, as I mentioned before, Illinois Green Schools Project, we were a first-place school for our sustainable efforts, and, you know, we are just a part of this, appreciative of the district in supporting this as well, and we're hopeful that what we're doing and what Melissa's doing at Lincoln is something that we can replicate across several of our schools. Let's see, I'm going to hit the button and see if it goes forward here. All right. I also want to, you know, express my gratitude for our guidance department and our nurse. I think during the past two years, we've seen the importance and the necessity of those individuals who are helping us through these times, whether that be with our social, emotional health and well-being, but also the illnesses and our education about those illnesses that have impacted schools in so many ways. So between individual counseling, our social groups, intervention, prevention, advocacy, and our parent resources, our guidance department and nurse have done so much to help us during the last couple of years, and I know they're going to be integral in regard to our success moving forward as we step outside the shadow of the pandemic. So with that, I do want to thank Joanne Bruton, who's our guidance counselor, Mary Condon and Katie Luna, our social workers, and I also want to give special appreciation and thanks to Rachel Osmo, our school nurse, for helping us through the last couple of years and continuing to be those stable aspects of our guidance department and health services at Lincoln. Lastly, we, just today, and let's see if I'm going to catch up here. There we go, there's Jim Tebow, I'm going backwards here. Today, we did have an all-school assembly at Lincoln. We also had an assembly at Emerson Middle School to kick off our St. Baldry's fundraising event. This is something that typically has been done every three years to do fundraising for St. Baldry's and pediatric cancer. Today was our kickoff assembly, so it starts our six-week fundraising campaign. It's going to culminate on March 8th, which is our shave event. Lincoln, Emerson, and basically the entire District 64 community is able to get involved. When this event was last run in 2019, the combined efforts did lead to $430 being raised, which did put the district in, what did I, what did I say?
$430.
Oh, $430, $430,000, yes, we raised more than $430. Thank you for the correction on that one. Those commas get me every time. You know, and it did put us in the top as far as worldwide St. Baldry's events, you know, with regards to the fundraising that's there. Our goal for the 2023 campaign is $500,000. We definitely think it's there, so not only are we at Emerson and Lincoln continuing to spread the word with that, we know that the microphone here with the community and the board and also our administration is going to help spread the word with regard to this. So more information will be coming out, but look to your local newsletters for that. This event really started with one individual being able to bring his own personal experiences and his passion for it to the schools. That is Jim Tebow. He's one of our math teachers at Lincoln Middle School. He did lead out our assembly today, and again, he's been so great in being a cheerleader for the cause and really making sure that this is a well-run event. And again, we didn't do it last year because we didn't feel we could do it right, and so that's just one, you know, characteristic of Jim. He wants to do things, wants to do it right, and today kicked it off. He did it right, and I know that we, as a fundraising group, are going to do it right as well. So just want to say thank you to Jim for all his efforts in making sure that this is an event that not only he can give back to, but it does get all of our students, all of our parents, all of our staff involved. We're really excited about it and looking forward to it for this coming fundraising campaign. So in summary, you know, and again, this didn't highlight one particular area. This isn't bringing anything new to your attention. Again, with an open mic in a public forum, I don't often get the opportunity to thank those that deserve to be thanked, and so I just wanted to say thanks to some of those individuals at Lincoln that make it what it is. Tim, did you want to kind of finish us out here?
So just on a lighter note, one of the clubs, which is what we're featuring tonight, our clubs, our after-school activities, those things that support the larger populace of Lincoln, the Rubik's Cube Club did not meet two weeks ago, and the kids came down to the office and gave death stares to Ms. Napier, the proctor of the club. She had to cancel it for that week, but that just shows the unique niche and passion that we have in all of these clubs and activities, that we can, we can match kids to all of their needs. It's funny that Dave put that up there, as the, Mr. Swed put that up there as our final slide here, pride and tradition potential and together Lincoln Middle School. That, that's kind of been since Mr. Swed came to Lincoln, kind of what, what we do, what we espouse, what we talk about, it's in a lot of our staff conversations and building meetings and those sorts of things, and it really does trickle down to all of the teachers and all the tentacles that go out to the kids for all these activities. So it really is a great place to work, to see all this unfold, and, and we're just the facilitators of making it go, but they're the ones that are really on the, you know, the grassroots, making all these great things happen. So been there 15 years, and I'm just very prideful of Lincoln Middle School and all that they're about. Thank you for your time.
And again, thank you, again, the programs and everything that we have. We know the board supports and our administration supports, and we just want to say thank you for not only supporting those programs, but also for supporting the individuals who put the time in to make these things beneficial experiences for all involved. So appreciate that, and if anybody has any questions, I'll feel free to answer those, otherwise I will step even further away from the mic and we'll go from there.
In 2019, I went to the St. Baldry's and offered to donate my hair, but some smart Alex said there wasn't enough there to cut.
I, you know, I've heard some similar comments cast my way, and, and I do apologize, I don't usually look this unkempt. I don't, I'm follically challenged up top, so I am growing out my beard. I will be shaping that at a certain point in time, so if I do look rather like, you know, I don't know, when I wear my winter cap, I look kind of like a pirate, like somebody who should be on a boat or something, but in any case, yeah, there's nothing coming off the top.
They took my daughters here, so that leaves them.
Absolutely, absolutely, and while I do plug St. Baldry's, again, you know, we do have the head shaving, but again, we're also looking for anybody who does want to donate hair. We do partner with Locks for Love and are able to make those donations into wigs as well. So in any way you can get involved, it's a great opportunity. Kicked off today, March 8th is our last event for that, so again, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swed, Mr. Gleason, and for a message of gratitude. Okay, next up, we are looking through our website, which has certainly had an update and our mascots, so we have Chris Lilly here to present that.
Yes. All right. Loading that up here, but yeah, one of the big projects that, as a district, has been working on since before I got here more than a year ago of, is updating the website, and we started with the district website, and that was updated and ready to go at the beginning of the year, and I've spent the last few months now doing each school's website, and so that's been a lot of fun of going through things and making things more user-friendly and less cluttered, but to get to that, we also needed mascot updates as well, and we have some fun things to share here. Ah ha. All right. You get to see my fun clip art and the Windows 95 here. And here are the all-eight logos from our schools, and they have, as you can see, a wide variety and a range of, whether it be drawings, maybe more updated logos, and then kind of all over the board. And we know that each school has a certain attachment to their logos, whether it be because a student drew it or came up with it, or maybe an art teacher, and so going through this process of refreshing and updating the logos, we kept that in mind, just to try and kind of honor the past, but give everything a more unified look, and so take a good hard look at those, because they'll be the last time we see these. Next, and here we go, how about this for an update? And just without even looking at the individual schools, you can see it's a nice cohesive unit as far as, you know, hey, it looks like these are all in the same district now, which is really nice. And kind of break it down further here. We partnered with Substance Graphics Company to establish that more professional and consistent visual identity across those eight schools, and like I said, it was more of a modernization for some, but it's all connected visually now, and brings a tear to my eye, it's so beautiful. And it was a lot of collaboration with the building principals and assistant and principals, so we couldn't have done it without them getting their input throughout the process of what they liked, didn't like, and the direction that they kind of wanted to go for the schools. And here's the Carpenter Cougars, a nice friendly Carpenter Cougar logo. And that was kind of part of the process, was finding logos that were friendly, that represent kind of an elementary school student base, but not too friendly. And this is a nice Field Phoenix update that is different than a lot of the Phoenix logos that you'll see throughout the country. Most of them are like the same, both wings out, it's like a mythological bird that it is, and so this was a fun one to kind of create something out of thin air as far as the Phoenix goes for field. And a lot of people don't know that, Phoenix is their mascot, so that's part of this update and everything, is to make sure that each school, you know, has their identity out there. And Franklin, they had a good logo before, but this one is nice and sharp and kind of goes with the others as well. And this one might be one of my favorites, the Roosevelt Tigers, and you'll notice the glasses on the tiger, an ode to Teddy Roosevelt, and that was from Principal Kevin Dwyer, his very smart input there, and that might be, yeah, the only tiger mascot you'll see in the country with glasses on, so. And it's studious and tough without looking menacing, and looks nice there. And this is the new Washington Wildcat logo before, yeah, theirs was just a drawing, and so this was a big upgrade as well, and no fangs, it's just a little extra fur there, and it was, we wanted to make sure that it, with the big cats, that it was, there was a discrepancy between all the big cats, and this looks like a wildcat, which is good. And then we get to the middle schools, and they had maybe a little more attachment to their logos, so it was totally understandable, and so we didn't want to maybe uproot that, we just kind of gave it more of the modernization, whether it be making it so that you can have like the HD version in different formats and whatnot, and then adding the typography with the Emerson Eagles, as you see there on that left. Just kind of, just give it a little makeover, but looks similar. And then similar with the Lincoln Lions logo, we simplified the face, so make it easier to print and all of that fun stuff, whether it be on clothing or signs or anything like that, just easier to reproduce. And this one's a really cool one, the Jefferson butterflies. There was another school, that was another school that people didn't know that butterflies was their logo, and here it is, a nice friendly butterfly with, and their color is rainbow, and I thought they did a really good job here of having that gradient rainbow to make it its own, and it's quite inviting. Jefferson butterflies, and so, oh no, ruining the surprise. I have to lie at all these prom statements. And as we were remaking these school websites, we wanted to make them easier to navigate, declutter them, keep them current, and kind of put showcase and put the stories that we do for each school at the forefront of each school's website, which is similar design and theme as our district website. And here's a little preview of what the school sites will look like starting tomorrow, and send out a letter to the community saying that they might host this weekend or Monday, Friday night, that they have switched over to this. URLs are all the same, but it'll look like this, where the new logo is showcased there. We'll have pictures of sliding slideshow on there, and then a whole new menu to make things easy to find, and then links to our social media, and those are the top buttons for places that you want to go, and then the story slide at the bottom. And so all of those, and then that box is unique to each school with the color, and we wanted to promote that, because on the current school websites, there's different colors that didn't match the school mascots or what their school colors were, and now this is representative of each. And there we go. Brand-new logos and new school website coming tomorrow.
All right, how about any questions for Chris, comments?
Yeah, Chris, just like the PTOs will have access to these, and so they can create, you know, fundraise via apparel and things like that.
Exactly, yep, yeah, the more the merrier, yeah, you should be sharing it out to them, yeah, and they can use it for all the things that they were, or even there were some PTOs that weren't even using their actual school logos, they were just kind of using like a database from whatever website, saying like, oh, this is a, let's say Falcon, for example, of just a generic Falcon that that website created, so now we'll be able to use our own when we create that spirit wear and everything, which is great.
Can they, PTOs continue to, thank you, continue to use the field, the gear that they have already purchased?
Yeah, no one's going to say, no, you can't wear this, yeah, for sure.
But PTOs can continue to sell it.
Yeah, there'll be a process as we phase in these, and it'll be at a, at a building level, we'll kind of, yeah, talk with them and make those decisions, but yeah, we're not going to, changing the branding of logos doesn't happen overnight, so there would be a process and patience that goes along with it.
And I liked your website before when you updated it, so I'm looking forward to it tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Thank you, I think the alignment's really important and certainly ease of navigation, so thanks for your work, Chris. Okay, all right, exciting. Okay, now we move, this is the point of the meeting where we welcome public comments. Each speaker will be given two minutes. We are going with two minutes due to the number of people here to address the board. Comments may be made on almost any matter related to the operation of schools, but we ask that you refrain from making comments concerning individual students or staff members. The board uses this time to listen to community questions and concerns, but will not respond immediately to requests for information. Additionally, the board cannot take formal action on non-agenda items. Contact the board president by email if you wish to discuss your topic further. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name, and if comfortable, your address for the minutes. I have a few people who signed in to speak, and so we'll go through these first, and then we can go whoever else wants to come to the podium. Okay, we will start with Monica Milligan. Please come to the podium.
My name is Monica Milligan. I live at 2801 Cherry Street. I'm a mother of two students in District 64 and a candidate for the school board with 20-plus years' experience in the educational sector.
Good evening. My name is Monica Milligan. I live at 2801 Cherry Street. I'm a mother of two students in District 64, and a candidate for the school board with 20-plus years experience in the educational sector as a teacher, district leader, and educational consultant. I'm here today because first and foremost, Dr. Olson, I wanted to just thank you for your service. Having spent the last couple of years supporting and counseling school and district leaders across the country to navigate the pandemic, I can tell you that you have led with incredible thoughtfulness and grace. So thank you. Secondly, I'm here to talk to the board about the next steps for the selection of Dr. Olson's replacement. I would implore the board to do three things. First, to create an inclusive process that allows our students, our teachers, and our community members an opportunity to weigh in. Given the decisiveness that, or the divisiveness that we have seen in our community, I think it's critical that we have a process that allows folks to weigh in and share their thoughts and opinions throughout the process. Secondly, I would implore the board to take time that it needs to create an incredibly strong candidate pool, to thoroughly vet the candidates, and to make the right selection. There is a national educator shortage across the country, and we have a, unfortunately, a growing reputation as a district that is difficult to work for as an educator. Given that, I think it's going to take time to build an incredibly strong and diverse candidate pool. And then lastly, we are, I would say that selecting a superintendent is the most important decision a board can make. And we are a couple months out from the next school board election. And I think it would behoove the board to wait to make a final selection until the new board is seated, so that the community can speak its mind via the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If we can, if we can limit the clapping or cheering, this is a board meeting. Appreciate that. Okay, next we have Megan Roberts Easterling. Please come to the podium.
Hey, it's Astraling, but, and I, like Monica, have been teaching for about 20 years. I currently teach in Northbrook, District 28. And I just kind of want to start by reviewing some pretty basic protocols around employee-related performance improvement in virtually every industry, including education. When an employee makes errors or his or her job performance is found to be lacking, that person is put on some type of remediation plan with measurable, tangible goals and benchmarks. On a side note, this is the exact same model for interventions in schools. See a need, set a goal, provide support and perform interventions, track the data over time. Basically, what I'm saying is, generally speaking, we give people time and opportunity to improve on performance. This seems particularly important when, for example, the person who may need to improve, or who is being perceived to need to improve, also happens to be the highest-paid employee in an organization and just had his contract renewed for two years. It certainly paints the hiring team as incompetent and trustworthy. I would certainly hope the same hiring team isn't expecting to hire the next superintendent, given that several of them won't even be serving on this board in a couple months. Because it's impossible to know for sure what happened, I'd like to share the perception around the education community in suburban Cook County, and certainly here in Park Ridge, regarding Dr. Olson's resignation. It's understood that Dr. Olson was either forced to resign, having been given the choice between that and being fired, or that he was resigned on his own volition due to the hostile environment in our district. No, dude, don't make that face. Neither of those is really appealing prospects to consider. We have a reputation of insane parents who barge through doors at Board of Education meetings, ABC News. We have reached a level of almost comically bad board leadership. We are literally in the midst of a national teacher shortage. Given either of those options above, I cannot imagine a decent candidate for superintendent wanting to work here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Kristin Olson.
Hi, I'm Kristin Olson. Had a child graduate through D-64. This is hard for me to say because I care a lot about some board members, and I admire some of you, but I hold the board's unprofessional and dysfunctional conduct to blame for the loss of Dr. Olson. I ask that the board recuse themselves from selecting his successor and allow the next board to have that task. Clean slate would be good for everybody. Thank you so much, Dr. Olson, for your service, and I wish you the very best in your career.
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Georgakis. Georgakis, I believe. Yes. Okay, all right. If you can come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Georgakis. I'm a District 64 parent, lifelong Park Ridge resident, and educator with over 15 years of experience in another district. In full transparency, I am also a candidate for the upcoming election for District 64. I want to address the board regarding the instability of our district and the negative impacts it will have on our students. I was shocked to see the resignation of Dr. Olson after the board unanimously approved his contract this past summer. The perception surrounding this resignation within the education community will absolutely affect our ability to attract and retain both a high-quality superintendent and exceptional educators. This instability will undoubtedly slow down progress on the strategic plan, which will be detrimental to our students. On the agenda tonight, there is a motion to hire an executive search firm to begin a search for a new superintendent. I read the board, I'm sorry, I read the board packet in its entirety. And in the action item, the name of the firm to be hired was blank. There is no contract for the community to review, and the taxpayer was not notified of what this would cost. I'm concerned how this lack of transparency will only further erode the trust between the community and this board. I respectfully request the board pause the process of hiring a new superintendent until after the new board is installed. I understand the urge to ensure that there is a new district leader in place by July 1st, but you're not going to get the right reader, leader, if you rush this. This is not an ordinary superintendent exit. The organizational health of our district has been significantly harmed by this sudden change. Pausing this process will not only increase our chances of finding a high-quality candidate, but also help the board begin to reestablish trust. Please let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the slips we have. So if we have other public comments, come to the podium. If you can state your name and address, if you're comfortable.
I'm not only comfortable, I'm proud of my address. Mark Anderson, 542 South Washington, Park Ridge, 25-year resident of the district and taxpayer. Here tonight to encourage the board to look out for our most vulnerable citizens, and that would be LGBTQ youth. They need our help. They need our support. They need our understanding. They need it at home, and they need it at school. They need it at school. And that's where you come in. You were elected to help kids. Please do your job. And it would have been nice if you'd given Dr. Olson a chance to do his job, too. That's all I've got to say, other than thank you for serving. Being elected official is a tough and thankless job.
Okay. All right. Other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Nan Parson, and I lived at 422 Lake Avenue for 52 years. I'm here again speaking about this time, my great disappointment that Dr. Olson has resigned. I, it's very disturbing to me and to many others whom I've spoken to that Park Ridge has seemingly joined those around the nation who are not supporting educators, who have done their best to enact policies aimed at protecting the most vulnerable among us. I had hoped in December that we were better than this, that we were on the path toward creating a more beloved and welcoming community with schools for which this is also the goal. But the fact that our elementary school board seems to have chosen to side with those who seek to undermine work aimed at promoting principles of democracy makes me feel frightened for our town. Promoting democracy means listening to and acting on behalf of the majority, not following the dictates of a radical minority. Last month, when I said we shouldn't let this happen here, that the attacks by the negative few, I was worried would lead us down a slippery slope toward discrimination and bigotry, now we've started down that slippery slope. It's also very disturbing that the decision to not to support Dr. Olson took place in closed session. I call on the board to announce who voted for retaining Dr. Olson and who didn't. We voters deserve to know so that we can act.
All right. Once again, please no applause.
Although I do appreciate that. We, so that we can make an informed decision in the ballot box. An informed public protects democracy, and clearly, our democracy is in dire need of protection. I just was at the end, I thought I had three minutes, not four. Yes, can I continue?
Just because of the amount of people, we went to two minutes, Nan.
Yeah, but we didn't know that when we prepared our remarks. So I need to speak a little bit longer.
You know what, we just, we've doing two minutes.
Okay. I just want to say that I hope the best for Dr. Olson. I hope he finds a community that is welcoming and friendly, unlike Park Ridge.
Thank you. Okay, next public comment. Come to the podium, please.
My name is Alex Waters. I live on Goodwin Drive, and I have two children in the district. I have a third grader at Carpenter and a sixth grader at Emerson. It's been a hard year to be a parent in this district. In the last 12 months, we've had conversations like, should we follow public health guidance? Should, in what month should we have our holiday concert? And we had, out of left field, an unsolicited, a revisitation of the SRO conversation that the administration didn't support, no one asked for, and put us nowhere, in no better place than we were when we had the same conversation three years ago. Conversations I'd like to be having are full-day kindergarten. I'm, it's wonderful that it was implemented. It's not perfect. There are things that we can talk about improving. I noticed on the agenda is a discussion of the tuition. I'd like to say that I don't think parents should have to pay tuition for their kids to receive special education services or primary challenge or recess. So I think, obviously, it's not going to go perfectly on the first try. These are the conversations that we need to be focusing our time and our attention and our community debates on. I'd also like to see a discussion of why we're still using balanced literacy in the district. You know, there are better curriculums. These, these are the conversations. You know, after the SRO conversation, we never actually got to hear back from Dr. Olson about behavior in the middle schools and sort of the productive thoughts that he had on the topic. And now, we're going to lose another year. Because we will be fighting these fights, we will be searching for a superintendent, it's going to take time to find a person and get them up to speed. It's really disheartening. And I would like to echo the sentiments of others that choosing the new superintendent should be a job for the new board, after the voters have a chance to speak their voice, and let's have community input and try and get to a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, other comments. Thank you. Come to the podium, please.
I thought I wrote my name outside. Did you have a list? But you didn't write my name.
You know what, so these are, the name is like a sign-in, and these are for people who want to speak. You're okay, though. If you can state your name and your address, if comfortable. Thank you.
My name is Gloria Kuchenberg. I live in 2367 South Dakota Court. I have two students, one in Franklin School, and the other one just transitioned to high school. So I want to share my experience in middle school. My son, for two years, I asked Emerson for academic support. When my son transitioned to high school, sadly, I found out that he didn't have the score to take another elective. So he was behind in English, and he had to take a remedial class. I asked for two years to the administration and the teachers, and they sent me to a book club. I was so surprised when I saw the presentation that I saw about your school today. Amazing. I wish my son had the opportunity to go to a literacy club or something else, or an after-school, when I asked. I'm going to ask you for two, three things tonight. One, share the data. What is the comparison data between the middle schools in the district? How many students are going to Maine-South to take a remedial class? And what are you guys doing for that? Second, why the parents don't know that? Why I wasn't informed about that? All I'm trying to do for my son is that he takes advantage of the amazing high school opportunities that we have. As you could tell, I wasn't born here. I have an accent. I didn't go to high school. English is my second language. I wish I had the opportunity to go to high school and take advantage of that. But my son had to fight for that, because academic achievement is not a priority in the district. Please hire a superintendent that put at the top of the priority, academic achievement, and challenge the students, and do innovation. That is not a controversial topic. That's a right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next comment. Come to the podium, please.
Mary Fontaine, 542 South Washington. I'm going to sound like a broken record, but these things are worth repeating. On a day like today, I don't have to remind us all that we don't live in Florida. And most of us who live here in District 64 don't want Florida schools. That means we expect there to be a clear separation between church and state. It means that all children should be welcome and nourished regardless of their skin color or their gender. And we should all acknowledge that critical thinking is an important life skill, and the way you get it is by being exposed to all kinds of different competing ideas and points of view. Teachers and administrators like Dr. Olson, who bring these values to life in our schools, have a very hard job, and they deserve our appreciation and our support. That's why the last few months have been so disheartening. But I want to echo everyone who's looked at the agenda and said, oh my God, are we going to try and hire a superintendent before the election? Early voting starts in five weeks. Four seats on this board could turn over. The voters do have a right to decide whether they're happy with the direction currently being taken, or they're think, they think maybe there should be a new path. And the people who are on the board after the election, whether or not they agree with me, should be the ones who select and hire the new superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other comments. Thank you. Come to the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Beth Rankin. I'm a Franklin parent. I'm here to express my sadness at Dr. Olson's resignation, and to belatedly thank him for his leadership during some very difficult years for our entire country and for public education. Thank you. We do not know the specific reasons, but there seems to be a consensus that the behavior of a minority of parents and an appeasing board combined to make his job more difficult, and to put it mildly, unpleasant. Past board meetings are available if anyone would like to dip into the vitriol and nonsense that was hurled at him in public. One irony is that the board has a policy on conduct that was seemingly thrown out the window when the angriest and most creatively abusive commenters took the mic. That is Policy 830. Some of us weren't paying attention then, or we were, but we didn't know what to do. And so our superintendent's resignation has much more to do with us than him. As a community, we will soon be in a position to elect new board members and hopefully hire a qualified superintendent. What do we offer someone interested in serving? What do we offer someone interested in serving in either capacity? Park Ridge has traditionally been a safe, family-oriented, stable community with quality schools. We are currently not stable. We are possibly not even civil. How do we show up for our educators now and going forward? Why would someone want to work hard? Because these jobs are hard. Why would they want to work hard for us and our kids? What kind of leadership reflects our values? We have mere weeks, as Mary said, to start answering these questions. On a final note, I want to share the district mission. Okay, I guess you could Google it. The last bit is that we accomplish what our goal is by nurturing interdependence, appreciation of differences, and care for self and others. This mission needs our support, our educators need our support, and not only when it's too late.
Beth, I need to, thank you. Okay, next public comment. Come to the podium.
Nicole Birmingham, 12 North Mero. I have two kids at Field. And I am deeply saddened and distressed over the recent action to what feels like most of us, to push Dr. Olson out of his position as superintendent. I found the part of your letter explaining that you had different visions particularly confusing. As just a couple short months ago, you unanimously voted to renew his contract. What is the vision of the board? I'd like to know who voted him out. I think the voters would like to know who voted him out. I'm a teacher in the world of education and superintendence is quite small. I teach in Lake County. The word is out there as well. District 64 is not a good place to come to. It's not a good place to work. It's not a nice place to be a superintendent. I am very concerned that we have put, through this decision, our kids, our teachers, our community at a disadvantage. Please wait until a new board is here to choose a superintendent. Thank you. And thank you so much, Dr. Olson, for your service and thank you, board members. I can't imagine doing this, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? If so, come to the podium. Come on up.
Hi, George Kuros, Field resident, soon to be Field parent. Baby on the way in a couple of months. Very excited about that. Going to keep my mask on, need to keep mama and baby safe with everything circulating. So if you can't hear me, let me know, I'll speak up. I'm here to ask what happened? Like, I genuinely want to know. I understand you can't answer me right now during public comment, but I really want information about what happened over the last few weeks. August, contract extension comes up for renewal. Not a single member of the board votes against it. If anyone had any difference of opinion about the vision, they certainly didn't make that known publicly. Next board meeting, nothing from the board about a difference in opinion in vision. Same thing at the next board meeting. And then, as best as I can tell, the precipitating event for all of this comes in November, when a member of the board, acting in their capacity as a member of the board, goes onto Facebook, always a bad idea, and makes a comment saying that moving the holiday saying is something that is in the purview of the board because it implicates their hiring and firing position. Not sure I agree with that interpretation, but that sets in motion a series of events where at the next board meeting, about a dozen people show up, say that they think they want the, they're upset with the holiday saying being moved, some say they call for the removal of the superintendent. Then the following board meeting in December, even more people turn out in support of Dr. Olson. So many, in fact, that you had to change the rules like you did today to move from three minutes to two minutes. And we find out today that at the same time that you were supposed to be getting feedback from the community, you had already made a decision to engineer the exit of the superintendent. I'm here to ask you to abide by the principles of transparency and community input. Tell us what's going on. I understand, I'm a lawyer too, there's things you can't get into because they have to do with personnel decisions. But tell us what your vision is, if that's going to be the basis for selecting the next board member. And tell us, did all of you feel like there was a difference of opinion about that vision or just some of you? We have a right to know. I know you speak in one voice as a board, but you're all elected officials and individually accountable for your decisions and we can't hold you accountable unless you're transparent about what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, come to the podium.
I'll be really, really brief. Ginger Pennington, 1105 Cleveland Avenue. I sent an email to the board about my general sentiments, so I just want to say, while I respect the need for a well-managed meeting and decorum in meetings and I understand the need for no clapping, I also feel very strongly, well, let me say this, and I understand that we need to address our comments only to the, to the board. So, saying to the board, I will tell you that if I were to talk to people thinking of moving here or to the superintendents on the job market right now that may or may not be considering coming here, I would ask them to watch the December board meeting and this one. And I would ask them to watch all of the people that came up to this podium to express how we feel about how this board has conducted its business over the last few months and how we feel about our superintendent. And please know that the passion, the dedication, the level-headedness, the inclusiveness, the kindness, the composure of all of the people you have heard from reflect what this community is really about. So I hope that we've woken up as a community and you will see more of that and less of the ugliness that has been shown in November and in February. Because that's not who we are. I don't think that is who we are. And though I can't ask people to clap, I would love to ask if people could silently and non-disruptively stand to show their support for Dr. Olson if they agree with me and support you. Thank you, Dr. Olson.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, are there other comments? Okay, thank you, everyone, all right. Now the board's going to move on to the next agenda item, A2, approval of the meeting agenda. Any board members want to move anything or make any changes to the agenda?
I would. The, the discussion and the vote on approval of student fees, could we separate kindergarten student fees from the, or I'm sorry, could we separate kindergarten tuition from the student fees?
So, so you're wanting to leave?
Well, one's a tuition, the other one is fees. So I think that they may, it may be best if they were two separate votes.
Okay, so you want to leave the agenda item where it is, but you're asking if they're two separate action items?
Right. Or is that, would that be better off done when we get to that, that agenda item? I mean, I could wait till then, yeah.
I mean, I think we can just do two different motions at that point.
Okay.
Okay, I don't think we need to move the agenda, though. Okay. All right, anything else from board members? Okay. All right, let's move on to our next item on the agenda. It's the adoption of Resolution Number 1306 directing the chief school business officer to begin the preparation of the tentative budget for the 2324 fiscal year. Adam, you are up.
Thank you. So this is the beginning, the official beginning of the budget process. It's a formal action by the board to allow me to begin preparing the budget. I do want to say at this point, and I've said it in previous board meetings, that it is my, my goal and my intention to bring a true balanced budget to the board. So that is what, you know, a lot of the actions are going to take place later this evening and at other board meetings after this, is based on that. So if any has, if the board has any questions, I'd be more than happy to address that at this time.
What about questions, comments from the board?
Adam, so just to get this right, you're going for a true balanced budget, estimated revenues offsetting expenditures and as opposed to last year where we did pass a balanced budget that was technically balanced by the state of Illinois, but it only had to be balanced in certain funds and not, not completely across all the funds of the district.
Correct. Using a true balanced budget, using revenues to outweigh expenditures, not using fund balances to outweigh expenditures.
Exactly. Thank you.
Other comments?
I assume you start this process using zero bank?
In most cases, in most cases, yes. But as I mentioned, you know, our number one goal is to balance the budget. So when we start meeting with department heads, we, you know, we just need to make sure that we're fiscally responsible and lean while still, you know, making our programs, sorry, our programs as robust as we have for a number of years.
If there are no more, Gareth, did you have something else?
No, I was going to.
Okay. If there are no more questions or comments, all right, let's take the motion.
I move the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, adopt Resolution Number 1306 directing the chief school business official under the direct supervision of the superintendent to begin preparation of a tentative budget for the 2023 to 2024 fiscal year in accordance with Board Policy 4:10 Fiscal and Business Management and the Illinois School Code 105 ILCS 517-1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Gareth had the motion, Leary had the second. Further discussion from the board? Okay, let's take a vote.
Lubinski, yes. Waitovich, yes. Kennedy?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Sellus?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Okay, next we have A4, approval of a settlement agreement with a non-certified employee. The board met on this in closed session. Are there any further questions before we take the motion? Okay, let's take the motion.
I move that Board of Education, Community Consolidated District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the settlement agreement and general release by and between the Board of Education and John Samp.
Is there a second? So Phyllis, Phyllis had the motion, Gareth had the second. Anything else from the board? Let's take a vote.
Lubinski, yes. Sellus?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Adam is staying up here because he's next on the agenda. It's approval of the Seventh Amendment of the Regular Education Transportation Agreement and the Fifth Amendment to the Special Education Transportation Agreement. Go ahead.
So just very briefly, as we've heard before, we are looking to extend transportation contracts with our current provider, Lakeview. We all know that it's been a very challenging busing environment, drivers, wages, trying to find vehicles. And even though we have had some challenges in the beginning of the year, we're doing substantially better than our neighbors with bus drivers and late routes and things like that. So highly recommend doing another extension. This year's extension is at 6.7 percent, slightly higher than the 6 percent previous year and lower than the 7.4 the year before. I do just want to caution the board on that note, in this rate environment, going out to bid would most likely return rates substantially higher. So I, again, answer any questions, but would recommend you taking action on this motion.
Okay, how about questions from the board for Adam?
Just a quick question, Adam. That's based on observations about the school districts going up for RFP locally.
Yes, conversations. My colleagues and I meet all the time and we, you know, discuss where we are with people that are going out to bid not. We just met actually last Friday and talked about that. So the bidding environment is not ideal at this point. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? All right, let's take the motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the Seventh Amendment to the Regular Education Transportation Service Contract with Lakeview Bus Lines, Inc. at a 6.7 percent increase in the current rates for regular transportation.
Phyllis had the motion?
Second.
Gareth's got the second. All right, any further discussion from the board? Okay, let's take a vote on the regular contract.
Sotos?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Sellus?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Pearl?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, there's also a second action item for the Special Education Transportation Services?
I move, I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the Fifth Amendment to the Special Education Transportation Services Contract with Lakeview Bus Lines, Inc. at a 6.7 percent increase in the current rates for special transportation.
Second.
All right, Gareth had the motion, Nikki had the second. Anything else from the board? Okay, let's take a vote.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Sellus?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Pearl?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, all right, thank you, Adam. Okay, the, the next agenda item, as Tom had said, we will, we can talk about the item and then we'll want to break that up. I think what I heard is two action items. Okay. All right, so Adam, student fees and kindergarten tuition for 2324.
So, yes, so just briefly, the memo is in your packet. The, the projected fees and tuition are all up on the screen also. This is always challenging because there's a economic piece to this and there's a, you know, philosophical, political piece to this. As I mentioned previously, economically, I need to balance the budget. So when we're talking about maintaining fees or raising fees, maintaining tuition or decreasing tuition, there's a, you know, large philosophical, educational aspect to that, but also there's an economical one, too. So based on what the board has done for, for many years here, the recommendation at this time would be to keep the regular fees the same. There are two areas of need that in discussions with some colleagues internally felt the need to make some increases. One is in the participatory fees, of course, raising elementary fees from $5 to $25, at the middle school from $15 to $40. Those are two areas where the stipends have increased and, you know, one of those situations where the expenses are going up, the fees are staying the same and we're, you know, there's a lack of balance there. Another area is in the area of transportation. We just approved two transportation contracts, slightly over 6 percent. Transportation fund is the fund in greatest need. So we're recommending for those individuals that are not receiving state reimbursement to increase those, that fee from $510 to $550. I know it's been a number of years since we increased that transportation fee and based on the numbers in the transportation fund, I feel like we need, we need to make that. And then the tuition numbers are there in aggregate. And as a board member mentioned, it looks like, you know, when we talk, we may want to discuss that and, you know, break those apart, but that's rationale for the student fees and open for discussion amongst yourself or questions of me.
So when, when I first got on this board, I worked with administration to clarify what these fees are for, break them down, categorize them so that our community knew exactly what this money was going for. And I think, I believe it actually helped the community understand that the fees were necessary and how they were being allocated. I do have only one, and I applaud you for not raising them yet again, the ones, you know, for the education portion of it and not the participation fees for the other stuff that apparently needed to be raised. I have a question, though. Full day kindergarten has a tuition and a fee?
Yes.
So, you know, we have these fees for the other areas that don't have tuitions because they're, they're paid for through our taxes. And the fees are there so that we can help supplement and provide, you know, whatever gaps there are so we can balance the budget. Why is the, a paid program, which whether I believe it should be paid or not is a completely different story, but we have a paid program and then we pay on, we pay to pay? Why is the, a paid program, which whether I believe it should be paid or not is a completely different story, but we have a paid program and then we pay on, we pay to pay. So you're, you're asking the, our residents to pay for the program and then, thank you for paying for it, now we want you to pay again for paying for it. Why not just build it all into one price and call it a day? Unless you're telling me that from the time we chose what the tuition should be to today, which is a year, maybe less, that the cost to the district increased and now we need to actually charge a fee on top of tuition. It doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, as I'm looking at the schedule, I, I'm going to apologize right now, the fee for full day kindergarten was in place last year. I know on the visual it doesn't say that way, this is not a new fee.
Then shame on me for not seeing it last year.
Okay.
And so I, the same, the same question I'm having this year, I should have had last year.
So when, and, and to the point, last year, we spent a significant amount of time talking about tuition. We did not spend as much time talking about student fees last year because we spent so much time and energy over several meetings talking about tuition. So now, whether you choose to separate the motion or not, or, or go in a different direction, but at this point, at this time of the year, preparing for registration, I chose to address both the fees and tuition. But I understand your question.
I mean, I guess the same argument goes for preschool. So if, if I can just get an explanation as to why we need fees on top of tuition, why not just raise the tuition price to where it covers that fee and that's just the tuition? But I mean, how do we, so for the same reason that I wanted a explanation and categorization of fees, what are these fees for? These fees are, are they for specific categories?
It's the, yeah, it's those same consumable materials for the different grade levels. So now, a full day kindergarten program now has the same type of consumable materials as grade first through fifth grade. And if you remember from last year when we discussed the fees, that is why we chose to put the full day kindergarten fee as the first grade fee because the idea is it's elementary school, it's full day, it's full day program. The students reading, reading, language arts, science, social studies, they're getting the same program at a full day level as you do in first grade and the rest of the elementary grades. That was the rationale for that.
I, I remember this discussion.
But it's, it's my understanding that the necessity, the categories that were broken out for the fees were items that we were allowed to charge for. So let's not talk about full day kindergarten, let's talk about regular, you know, K through, or one through, you know, one through eight. Or K, half day kindergarten through eight. Those are the fees we're allowed to charge for because they're not part of the education that we're entitled to. So there's categories that we can fit these things into that we're allowed to charge for. There are certain things we can't charge our residents for because we have to give them a free education. And I use that word free lightly because we pay taxes. But when you then charge for full day kindergarten to cover expenses, because there is no rule in Illinois that we have to give full day kindergarten, we are entitled to charge for full day kindergarten, why have it categorized as a fee? Because we can charge whatever we want for full day kindergarten. We don't need a fee category for full day kindergarten. We have the right to charge whatever we want for full day kindergarten. We don't need to use the fee category to supplement the deficit in the difference between what we collect in taxes and what we offer as a district. We can just charge it because there's no law that says we can't. So I'm not understanding why there's a fee for that and why they're both separated. It's bad enough we're charging for full day kindergarten, but on top of it to then charge a fee for it, it's just almost insulting, in my opinion.
So just, just clarifying, are you saying that you would feel more comfortable if the, the two hundred and twenty-seven dollars would apply to the tuition? Or are you saying that the two hundred and twenty-seven dollars would go away?
Well, when we get to the vote of tuition, you'll know the answer to that because I think they both should go away.
Okay.
This district made a choice to have full day kindergarten, we should have been able to do it without having to charge our constituents for it.
Okay, thank you.
But we moved ahead and did it anyway and found ourselves in a position where the only way you're going to get a true balanced budget is on the backs of kindergarten parents.
They have a choice to not go full day. We're not, we didn't take away the half day. You don't want to go full day and you want to go to a Mary Street or St. Paul or a St. Andrews and pay that, then you can do that too.
I'm agree to disagree.
And Nikki, did you, you were saying you remember this discussion from last year, did you want to add anything to that?
No.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Just to answer your, Phyllis, our entire tax base is paying the thirty-plus million dollar price tag for it, though, whether you go or not. So that's where I'm having an issue.
Maybe we can, we can talk about what we, if there is a kind of a, a potential solution for the board there when we get there, but I, I've got another question, if that's okay, on, on, you know, the, the bus in. By the way, well, there's, there's two increases going on here, right? Just so we, we talk about it's chorus, which I have a vested interest in. My, my, my daughter is, is in chorus and she loves it, so it's great, but I don't mind paying an extra twenty bucks but, for that, but that, that seems to make sense because five bucks seemed out of line with other programs. So to me, that makes sense. The, and, and also I just want to make sure, though, that, for everybody out there, that there is, that we have a policy in place for those who cannot afford fees, that, that, that we have a policy there where people, children can participate in these programs if they.
Correct.
Okay.
And tuition, and the kindergarten tuition, just to add that, thank you Gareth.
Yeah, that's right. Thanks Denise. So, but then we get down to the buses and, you know, you're recommending an increase from five hundred and ten to five hundred and fifty dollars for the all-year buses for those who, who are not, who reside within the areas that they would have to pay because there's certain state restrictions. But then on the cold weather bus, you're recommending a reduction from three oh five to two ten and that's the buses that run from Thanksgiving through spring, through spring break. And help me understand those, we're, there's no extra buses that go on the road when, when, so we're paying for those buses year-round?
Correct.
So, you know, for some people to decide to, to just use the cold weather bus, you know, there's really a kind of a premium there because we have to pay for that bus all year round. So could you help me understand, you know, the, the recommendation to reduce that to two ten versus from, from three oh five?
Definitely, so this goes back to, again, the, you know, the balance between, you know, politics and philosophy and economics. So there were a handful of parents that reached out to me about the cold weather, weather price rated at three oh five as opposed to five ten, using that same, that same, you know, question of the district is charging three hundred and five dollars for three months when you're charging five hundred and ten dollars for the entire year, felt that it was not fair and felt that it should be more in line with the proration. So based on those conversations, I brought that recommendation this evening, but again, when we're talking from an economic standpoint, I fully understand, you know, the three oh five makes, makes, you know, makes more economic sense than the two ten. But there were some, again, parents talking about fairness and that's how I arrived at, at, at this number.
Yeah, I guess the counterpoint to that would be the parents who are paying for the full year because they're paying for the bus all year round. They're, they're effectively paying a premium to subsidize at that point the, the, those who elect in only on the cold weather because those buses have to be there year-round.
True.
Back on the kindergarten thing, I just want to say this again because Tom just said, oh, the whole town is paying for the full day kindergarten. And I really, I've said it before and I'm going to say it again, I really resent the fact that they keep saying taxpayers are paying for a full day kindergarten when this project included so much more than full day kindergarten. And I just don't understand what is so difficult to understand about that. Our buildings had not been repaired for years. We, yes, we did get full day kindergarten. We also got new bathrooms that were ADA approved. We got new fire alarm systems, new water heaters, new air conditioning. I mean, we got a ton of new stuff. Our art teachers were on a cart, they got their own room. Our music teachers did not have their own room, they're, they have their own room and multiple instruments were purchased. We have brand new computers. I mean, we have state-of-the-art stuff for kindergarten through eighth grade and you guys just keep saying, it's full day kindergarten. Don't, and then the public says, well, we're all, we're just paying for full day kindergarten. That's not true, Tom. You've, you're upset because you voted no.
I'm not upset and I, and I'll only answer one thing. We did get some extra stuff.
You got a lot of extra stuff.
Yeah, but not all the extra stuff you just said. A lot of that stuff was done before this project. The majority of this project was the addition of rooms for full day kindergarten and the eleven million dollar project we're sitting in right now.
This building needed it the most.
This, this building didn't need to be what it is. I'm just saying that the, the large amount of what we spent was for full day kindergarten and was for the renovation of Jefferson and bringing the main offices to this place. It was a big, big number. There's no way of taking that away.
So that's what I was just going to say, let's stick to fees and the tuition, which is the topic. Okay.
And the tuition, the tuition for full day kindergarten is tied to how we got there, so this is on topic. So I think both Phyllis and I are appropriate in making our statements and we can do it cordially.
So before anybody makes a motion, could, does anybody have a problem making it back to three oh five for the cold weather bus?
I do not have a problem with that. Because that would give us more money. Yes, I'm in favor of that.
I mean, I actually appreciate that we were responsive to parents and, and did a prorated charge. You know, because then, you know, what's the rationale on fees? I can understand that rationale, so I say we leave it as Adam presented.
I would propose you don't increase it by forty dollars for the all-weather and put that, put that back into the cold weather. So have no, have no change, keep, keep it five-ten for the all-year, so you're not having those folks subsidize the others instead of giving a ninety-five dollar credit. Do, reduce that. Is that fair? That, that's splitting the difference.
So what, what is your proposal? So we're changing now.
Don't increase the all-year people, but take that forty dollars that you were going to charge the all-year bus people and then instead of decreasing cold weather by ninety-five dollars, subtract forty from that.
But I don't think there's enough cold weather bus people to make up that delta. So you'd end up taking it out of.
There would still be, there would still be a small difference there. I understand the, the idea there. Listen, the, the reason why cold weather was three oh five, and I'm sure you relayed this to the parents who, who asked, when you, when you sign on for internet service at your home and you pay for the whole year, you get a different price than if you only pay for three months. And, and that's because we as a district have to balance the cost of how many riders, how many buses, so on and so forth. So when you, when you choose to do just a portion of a service, the portion is going to cost you a little bit more than if you were to take the whole service as a whole for the year. So that's how I would have explained it to a parent.
And that was the rationale for the three oh five and whether the three oh five went that way.
And it was, in my opinion, it was a proper rationale because that's, that's just how, you know, that's the only way to balance it, that's the only way to budget it. You know, to, to ask and request a, a direct prorated share based on a direct proration of how often you use it and how often you don't, it makes it very difficult for us as a district to then, we, so because we have additional people who want to use the bus during the cold weathers, we have to potentially add services for the whole year because we'll see an increase in the winter. I'm sure it probably doesn't happen, but it potentially could. And then that would, that would be, that would become a problem for us. We would have to pay the extra cost to add a bus, find another driver. But I do really like your proposal. I like the idea of even though the delta's not right, you're right Gareth, it's not going to be, it's not going to outbalance it the most, but it will bring us a little bit closer. So maybe it's a good compromise between the two. But I, I still think that the cold weather people should, should pay a little bit more.
But, but effectively, right, if you stay with five-ten for, for all year and keep the whole weather at three oh five, we just, the last action item or a couple of actions I'm going to go, we just approved a seven percent increase in transportation costs. So, but we also, a few agenda items ago, asked Adam to, Adam to balance budget. So we kind of like, we're, we're kind of handicapping him if we keep taking away, you know, those sources of revenue that's going to help him, that he's recommending to, to, to help him get to a balanced budget. So that's what I'm trying to do here. I'm trying to, like, by taking away the forty dollars to the, from the five-ten to the five-fifty, I'm trying to pack, put the, the three oh five back up. Even then, next year, if we kept those, those cold weather bus people have a bigger discount than they did this year because they're paying three oh five versus five fifty instead of three oh five versus five-ten.
Sometimes, sometimes we make decisions that are not solely financial and certain families may just, they can't afford the whole year and they absolutely would need it during the cold weather. And, you know, three oh five, the, the difference between three oh five and two-ten might be the difference between a kid walking or a kid taking a bus or a parent being late to work. So sometimes when the numbers aren't too huge, and I'm sure you can find a way to make up the difference here somewhere, I don't know, I, I get torn when it comes to stuff like that, so.
Well, and let's remember, Adam has all the data on how many families sign up for cold weather, how many sign up for a year. We don't have all that. And so I think the recommendation was made in this way and so the board should let Adam do his job. Okay, so what are we doing here?
I just have a question. So you mentioned that, you know, at the preparation of the tentative budget, you're kind of counting on us to approve these action items. Right now, you know, we're, you're proposing slight increases plus keeping kindergarten tuition. So have you thought about in what year you envision decreases in fees, decreases in tuition and/or the elimination of kindergarten tuition?
Definitely wouldn't, I definitely am not planning to do it for next year, I'll tell you that.
Right, yes, correct, because of these action items, but what, I mean, have you thought about what year, though? If the answer's no, that's fine.
No, not yet, not yet, because there are several other factors that play into that and I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to make a guesstimate now that says like in two years and then two years, yeah.
Exactly. But I was thinking that it would be good if that were just in the back.
Not at this, not at this time.
Correct, if, you know, because when we did approve full daycare and, you know, that tuition amount, I think we envisioned at some point in the future that that would be eliminated, so I want to keep that on the radar.
Definitely.
Okay.
And I will say, it is more typical in districts after three years.
Okay.
I, I'm going to, going to make a comment and then to give you some idea of, of, of what I'm thinking. I, I am not a believer in charging tuition to go to a public school. Never have been, never will be. Their fees are necessary. So that'll give you some idea of what, how this board member's going to vote. As long as tuition's up there on that list to go to a public school, I'm a no vote. So I wasn't on the board when it came around over a year ago. That's how I would have voted then and that's how I'm going to vote now. I campaigned for full day kindergarten in two thousand seventeen and part of my campaign was, yes, there'll be a fee, but they never talked about tuition. So.
So. Carol, from, from my understanding from previous board meetings and questions we asked and from reviewing the, the financials, the money we borrowed, the bonds, the length of those bonds, it doesn't look like that tuition's going away within five years. It's not going to be in two years, it's not going to be in three. The public should know that it's going to be potentially five plus before we are in a financial situation to be able to get rid of the entire fee. Now, might we be able to strategically slowly reduce it prior to that? Maybe, but for it to completely go away, I would be very comfortable saying that it's not going to be prior to five years.
So Adam, in light of Mr. Riles' prior comment, so what is your plan if this motion fails? I mean, have you thought about it basically? And if not, then that's fine too.
If the motion, if the, frankly, if the motion fails, I'll go back and start, start working, working some magic.
And are you confident, are you confident that you can find a solution to the extent that it does fail, though?
It would, it would be extremely, extremely, extremely challenging to eliminate kindergarten tuition for next year and balance the budget without doing other types of substantial increases and/or staffing and program cuts in other areas. Or using fund balance to balance the budget. So, there's, there's many different tools here. But, they, doing everything that I, we've been basing it under, the idea was a true balanced budget and, and keeping kindergarten tuition intact on a short-term basis, whether that's two, three, or five. You know, those are things that we, we were talking about last year.
And then if you did use the fund balance, would you consider that a true, um, balanced budget?
Using fund balance is not a true balanced budget.
So, then you would think of those other alternatives to increasing.
It's using, it's using your savings account to pay your credit card bills.
And, you know, Larry, I appreciate that you campaigned on full day kindergarten, I think, but I just have to say, I mean, this board got it approved. So, I just need to say that.
Well, the other option too is let's say it fails today, then probably in February, you know, which, I don't know. Well, that wouldn't be too late. Then you would maybe propose different amounts, right?
Well, just, just to clarify, one of the reasons, um, we're here tonight is because on the backend, we're preparing for registrations. We're getting everything together. So, which really has a major bearing on the fees, not necessarily tuition. But the reason that, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that the, really imploring the board to come to a decision on fees and not push it off till February so that we can build the, the backend so that, uh, registration, which is very crucial for staffing and everything, will be, um, will be intact.
If no one has any other questions, I'll make the motion.
Does anyone need to pull, to, to parcel out tuition comparative to fees?
Well, we already, I already did that.
I think we're already, I think right now, we're just gonna motion on fees.
Right. Tuition's gonna be separate from fees. Does anyone wanna parcel out the fee for full day kindergarten out of these fees? Or do we wanna just leave that fee in there?
I think just fees.
What's our registration date?
March, March seventh is when we're gonna begin registration for all new and returning students. Preschool at, um, preschool at Jefferson is gonna begin on February seventh.
Just one question if you know, you or you know Tony, uh, I was hearing that the state was gonna mandate full day kindergarten. Is that?
They've been saying that for ten years.
Yeah, no, not yet.
Let's take the motion.
I move that the Board of Education Community Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge Niles, Illinois, approved the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four student fees as presented.
Second.
All right, Tom had the motion, Gareth had the second. Any further discussion just on fees? Okay, let's do a vote.
Riles?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Whitovich?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Salas?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Motion carries.
Okay. All right, so now we'll move on to tuition. Uh, we've asked questions. Why don't we take the motion and then we can have discussion?
I move that the Board of Education of, Board of Education Community Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge Niles, Illinois, approved the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four kindergarten tuition as presented.
Second.
All right, Tom had the motion, Gareth had the second. Uh, any further discussion from the board?
So, I will, before we go into the vote, I'll, I'll just say there's, there's certain times when a board member may disagree with something, but know that voting a certain way is better for the district at the time. That doesn't mean that tomorrow, if this issue comes back up again, or next year when another board is here, they can do something different. It actually happens a lot on this board. This board has made statements, has supported certain situations, has non-supported certain situations. And a lot of it has to do with what needs to be done at that moment, what's best for the district at that moment. And that doesn't mean that that's the exact same thing that, that would be best for the district two months later, a month and a half later, three weeks later. And that goes for financial decisions as well as decisions for, uh, employment and everything else. So, th- this board makes decisions as to, I, I would hope, as to what's best for the district at that specific moment. So, having said that, I will vote yes for these, the, the fee for tuition with a great objection as to why we should even have them in the first place. Uh, I voted no for full day kindergarten. Uh, I didn't want this, I, I was hoping that we wouldn't get into a position where the finances would be so bad that we would have to, uh, have tuition. However, I also have looked at those numbers, at our numbers as a district, and not charging for full day kindergarten right now would put us in such a grave situation financially that it would be not, it wouldn't be fiscally responsible of me to vote against it. So, I'm going to vote yes for it, but only for that reason. I wanted to make it very clear to this board and to the public that I'm doing it for that reason and that reason alone. I still disagree with the tuition. I don't believe it should be charged to those parents. We made a decision to have full day kindergarten. It should've been put, it should've, it should've not have been a non-chargeable situation. Otherwise, we just shouldn't have done it.
Okay, anything else from the board?
I would just ask Adam, just to, for the rest of the board to understand as well as myself. I think last year, I remember like when we, we ended up with the tuition number that we did, I think it was estimated to create about one point three to one point four million of revenue. So, is that about roughly what it is? Just so the board understands, like, what in context, if somebody votes no here, what they're voting to, you know, from a balanced budget standpoint, they're gonna create a hole of one point three, one point four million dollars?
It's close to that. Remember that we have some, we have some, uh, first, number one, we have some kids that are chose half-day, which then they're not getting the tuition. Um, number two, we have some that are, um, applied for fee waivers and qualify for fee waivers. And then based on what the policy committee did with, um, with the modified fee waivers, we have some students in there. So, it's, it's not quite one point three right now. Um, but it's, it's within that ballpark based on those three factors. The other thing, and I know Dr. Olson said this before, when you implement a full day kindergarten program, usually the first year you have, you know, more kids choosing half-day. And then in year two, and then in year three, you'll have more go from half to full. So, I'm, you know, I'm hopeful that those numbers of, you know, those, those half-day numbers will go, will decrease. Therefore, the tuition numbers will increase. So, we'll get closer to that number.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Salas?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Whitovich?
No.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Riles?
No.
Motion carries, forty-two.
Okay. Five to two.
Five to two.
Five to two, sorry.
Yes, that's okay. Okay. All right, so let's move on to our next agenda item. It's approval of the architect of record. And this is Adam's item as well.
So, the board is aware of this, but again, for, you know, for everyone's sake, including the public, just wanna run through the steps really quick. So, the, uh, an RFQ was put together and put out publicly. Several firms submitted their RFQs where Mr. Bersani and I graded them and gave them points. We then brought eight firms into interview in a one-on, a traditional one-hour interview. From those eight firms, we had four firms come back and do a presentation to several of us, including another Q and A. From those, um, we ranked those and the, um, we, earlier this, this evening, we, you know, we passed around information about the top two companies. And we are recommending White and Company as the, as the top choice. Sorry, I wrote in the memo, but again, just, just continuing on that, uh, they have a proven record in K-12 construction. They have relationships with the city of Park Ridge, which we know is, um, very important for the permitting process and getting construction, you know, and part of the construction process. And another thing that we really like is they have civil, structural, and mechanical engineers in-house as part of them, which is different as opposed to the architectural firm, uh, outsourcing them out.
So, this, this in no way is a, not on our previous architect. This is a process that we as a board go through when we hire our law firms to represent us, when we hire our architects to represent us and other, you know, firms to represent us. We go through these bidding processes periodically.
Correct.
To make sure that we, we're with the right people, that we, we feel it's a great, good fit, cost, price, all that good stuff. So, you reviewed everything and based on what you reviewed, this is your recommendation?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Adam, I'm curious if you or Tony have worked with this architectural firm before?
Um, Mr. Bersani has had some experience with them directly.
I assume positive experience. But help me out with not having that assumption.
Yeah, actually, as you know, this is my fourth district here, working in, in, uh, building grounds. I work with White Company three out of four at some capacity. Last district, uh, Valley View, where I came from, uh, exclusively, uh, in large projects with Valley View, with MEP and civil. So, yeah. I stand with, with the decision.
Tony, this, this question's for you. This AIA contract. That's between us and the, that is a pretty strict standard contract that's used with architects. And rarely does it ever get heavily modified.
Uh, well, we.
And so, I was gonna ask you, how, how much did you beat it up?
Yeah, we, we actually, these are all standard documents. So, when the standard documents come out, our corporate team goes through them very, very thoroughly, and we have model documents. Listen, the, the documents as is, without modification, are very one-sided.
Yes.
Right? They, they are very on the architect's side, and we know that. So, we go through and pour through those and make sure that it, it is more equitable. And, and we do that, these are like model templates that we give you because we know how many districts use them, because they have to, and we know how one-sided they are. So, we make it more equitable for you guys. So, yes.
So, I feel a lot more comfortable knowing that you just said that, cause I've had my, uh, stint with AIA contracts. And like you said, after reading them, the, when they're presented to you, you just wanna throw up.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, Adam and Tony brought the, uh, the, the winner of that process and I guess the second place. The actual materials, they submitted the hard copies, uh, tonight and, uh, looking through them, they both were very professional firms. What, what made you decide between, um, White and Company and Archon?
I said those, those, the, those big things of the relationship with the city of Park Ridge, and then having the mechanical, structural, and civil in-house, those were really, um, you know. In addition to when they gave their presentation about, you know, what the next steps would be with our five-year plan, how they, you know, quickly identified our mechanical issues, uh, parking lots, as if they were onsite in buildings. So, they, they, they knew that right away.
One thing I'll add to that too, in the process is when you have them, where they sub out their civil or their MEP, um, it kinda takes it away from me, right? So, what, what I have right now, like with the design build we did here with Midwest, is a direct call to the superintendent. It's a direct call to their, uh, architect. It's a direct call to, uh, whichever person falls for that part of the job set. And there's someone at that other end that answers directly, so we can expedite where we're at as opposed to the layers that have to go through to go back and forth to get something accomplished, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Thank you.
Was Studio G C one of the final eight that you interviewed?
They were in the eight, yeah.
We did interview Studio G C.
Anything else before we take the motion?
No, I just wanted to mention that if this motion passes, then we have policy two colon one seventy that says that the, um, firm selected has to meet with the board to discuss responsibilities and scope of services. So, in the future, in one of the next future meetings, that should happen. So, we'll pick a date at some point. Maybe right before we have something that needs to be done, right?
That, it'll be transitional between the two groups as well. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a transition.
Yes.
Definitely.
Thanks, Carol. Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education Community Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge Niles, Illinois, approve White and Company as Architect of Record.
Second.
All right, Gareth had the motion, Larry had the second. Further discussion from the board? Okay, roll call vote.
Soto?
Yes.
Salas?
Yes.
Whitovich?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Riles?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks for the word care. Okay, Adam, you're still up. One more. Okay, so here is Resolution thirteen oh seven, authorizing the engagement of a real estate broker. We talked about this property last meeting, I believe.
Correct. So, um, you're familiar with the process because we talked about going through this with ESC and now a similar process with this vacant property, um, behind one of our former schools. So, we, we held, I held a pre-bid meeting and a bid opening. There is one participant who is interested in the property, just not interested at the minimum of three hundred and fifty thousand. So, because of that and conversations that we have, I'm gonna recommend that we take the next step, which would be to engage the services of a broker and have a broker with their expertise being able to market that property and see if we aren't able to generate more interest. You also know from, from past conversations, even though a broker is able to do this, they still cannot, um, they still have to use that minimum three hundred and fifty thousand dollar price that was set by the board. Questions?
Can you explain how you're gonna select that broker? Because some of us have connections to various brokers and other, you know, various capacities. Um, so we just wanna make sure that nobody has a conflict or anything.
Well, and, and to the, and, you know, I'm sure Mr. Lewis, you'll speak a little bit. But yeah, based on just, just keeping it above board with board members and myself, um, I will be, I will be interacting with individual brokers and then selecting one to, to take the job.
I mean, if you guys have any conflicts, you need to let them know that.
So, then when would you let us know when you choose that person? That's what I'm asking. Like, how would we find out when we can do the conflicts check?
Probably within the next month. I'd say within the next month, next few weeks.
And then that would just be like in a memo that we would?
Yes.
Check. Okay.
Yes.
It, it, there's no other way around it. Like, say if somebody abstains instead or votes present, um, and then.
I have to understand what the conflict is.
Or did you wanna know? We can tell you ahead of time, certain ones that we already have conflicts.
And you should do that. I mean, there's two kinds of conflicts. There's the actual legal conflict. For example, if one of you is a owner of one of these brokers, there's nothing we can do to get around that. And then there's just the perception of a conflict. You've done a lot of business with these individuals. That's not a true conflict that would stop you. Um, but sometimes people don't feel comfortable and they could abstain from voting. You disclose and you'd abstain.
Me personally, I think it, it's best that, you know, we, we trusted you to narrow down who we're gonna use for an architect. Uh, I would feel most comfortable not giving you a recommendation for a agent and allow you to figure out.
Oh, Tom, I'm not saying a recommendation. I'm saying we cannot, like, what if someone's.
Right, but once he, once he comes back with who he chose, then we can do a quick conflicts check. And if there's not a conflicts check, but there's a, uh, a, a conflict of, you know,
Perceived.
Perceived conflict, we could let you know, and then we could figure out how to, how to handle that.
Definitely.
I'll, I'll trust you to pick the, the agent.
So, the board has to vote on the hiring of what? No?
No.
Oh, okay.
The, this resolution is giving the authority.
To Adam. Okay.
Right, with the understanding that you're gonna check in a few weeks.
Check to make sure there's no conflict.
Yeah.
Okay. And is seven percent the typical going rate? Are you, is that, is that a cushion?
It's, it's, it's a not to exceed, but my understanding is that seems to be the going rate.
Really? Okay.
The not to exceed comes from the school code.
Yeah.
So, they can't exceed that. It's law.
Okay.
But you think you can get a better deal than seven percent?
We will, we will see.
Listen, there's a, there's a standard that's a little lower than seven. However, if you want your agent to really work for you and work hard, you might wanna give them, you know, a little higher. And it's not abnormal to see a rate go from six percent to seven.
That might be a deciding factor, you know, so, okay. All right. All right, let's take the motion.
I move that the Board of Education Community Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge Niles, adopt Resolution thirteen oh seven, authorizing the engagement of a real estate broker to sell real property with broker's fees not to exceed seven percent.
Second.
Okay, Phyllis had the motion, Gareth had the second. Further board discussion? Okay, roll call.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Salas?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Whitovich?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Pearl?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Motion carries. Find us a broker.
Okay. And Adam, I think that you are done for the evening.
We'll see.
For now, okay. Okay, next on the agenda, um, the board was presented, um, MJ presented projects and contracts for E-Rates at the December meeting, and now it's coming back to the board for approval. You're on.
All right, good evening.
All right, good evening, and thanks for this opportunity tonight to bring to you the district's recommendations for proposals for the two upcoming E-Rate projects to be installed this summer, 2023. The first project is to upgrade the district's firewall, as explained in the December Board of Education meeting. The district has migrated to the Illinois Century Network, or ICN, and now has a 10-gigabyte bandwidth. To capitalize on this bandwidth, the district will need to upgrade its firewall so that it can handle that kind of capacity. So the district went and reviewed current makes and models out in the market, matched those to our current needs, and concluded that the Palo Alto offerings were the best match for us. The district currently runs a Palo Alto firewall, so it'd be an easier upgrade, and our plan is to have this new firewall until 2030, barring any unforeseen circumstances, so future-proofing. The district then went through the bid process with E-Rates for an upgraded Palo Alto model, and as a crucial, as a crucial part of the district's layered cybersecurity strategy, the purpose of the, the purchase of the firewall will also include associated subscriptions for URL filtering and threat prevention. The district also has sought a premium-level support rather than what we've previously done, which was purchase a backup unit, which would then, which now is really cost-prohibitive when you're dealing with larger bandwidth sizes such as this. So the district received two bids for the firewall, the subscriptions, and the support plan. The table in the memo outlines the proposal costs from CDW, CDWG, and SHI. So in looking at the costs, the recommendation is to purchase the Palo Alto firewall and associated three-year subscriptions, along with the premium-level support from CDW, for the total cost of $98,725.96. The expected E-Rate discount will be $29,914.55, so it ends up that the anticipated actual expenditure will be $68,811.41 after discount. Any questions about the firewall? You were on.
Sorry. Looks like that's a few thousand dollars under the budget you gave us in December. I think it was a hundred thousand before.
Yeah, it was like an estimate, so...
Yeah, okay, good, thanks.
Kinda came in good.
We like that direction.
Should've bought a lot of them, you know, there.
Right.
Right, Gareth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so the second E-Rate project is about upgrading our switches in our network infrastructure. The, the district, again, followed the E-Rate bidding process and obtained proposals for the upgrade of 50 switches, as well as those associated subscriptions in order to manage the switches. And again, just as we did with researching the firewall options, the district also researched switch models currently on the market. As the bid proposals have been reviewed, one important consideration was to make sure that we weren't going to, that we were going to avoid diversifying our switch models. Makes it harder to manage, makes it harder to troubleshoot different models, different architectures, et cetera. So, and it would definitely diminish our capacity to manage the network and make the toolset harder to work with, especially with a network team of 1.5 people. So with that said, the district did still examine the bids that came in from all of the different manufacturers and, and came to a final recommendation. We did weigh that, so, just so you know, we did weigh whether to rip out all, all 80 switches and see what that scenario would cost and such with the different models. But we really did land on sticking with the Juniper line from CDW. So as you see in the memo, the bids that were received summarized, and so we are confident that as we continue with the Juniper model, we are getting high-quality equipment at a really good value, as you can see, it's the second least expensive. It is a multi-featured switch management toolset. Again, we have a really lean 1.5 network team, so those kind of tools really come in handy. And then the timely release of the Juniper will really help us to try to, would give us the longest potential use cycle of about eight to nine years. We did entertain looking at the HP Aruba 62F, as is the least, least expensive bid that came in, but what we did find is that it didn't have what we call a multi, multi-gigabit capacity, and it would not be able to handle higher-powered access points, the wireless access points, that are coming down the line, right? So real, a limited amount of future-proofing with that model, and, and as you can really see, it's really not a huge difference between that, you know, less-featured model as opposed to the Juniper that we're recommending. So we are recommending that the Board of Education award the bid to CDWG in the amount of $224,096, and that's a before E-Rate discount. And then the E-Rate discount would be $89,638.40, which then ultimately calculates to an expenditure of $134,457.60. Any questions about the switches?
So the, when, when this bid went out, two came back with the Juniper. Did we not ask for them, the others, to bid on the Juniper?
We, we, we mentioned Juniper, but we, we said we'd entertain other models as proposed, so...
Because I think, it seems like it's, if, if you're asking, if you know you want the Juniper, it seems at that point, to get an effective bid process going, feels like that you'd want to get the quotes from the others on what the Juniper would cost.
It, it was really general. We did mention that we would, we would prefer Juniper, but we were gonna be able to entertain whoever, whatever wanted, whatever the vendors were going to be proposing, given, given our needs, so...
And after having done it, if the HP Aruba would have met your needs, you would have won with that one?
Exactly.
So it didn't have to be the Juniper, it's just that one ended up being the one that has the features you need?
Right.
And, and is the, is the five-year subscription to cloud management license that comes with that, is that typical, or you, you wouldn't typically go with another vendor for that?
Oh, no, yeah, that's all bundled with that particular, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Let's take the motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois approve the purchase of the Palo Alto firewall from CDWG in the amount of $98,725.96, which includes three-year subscriptions to threat prevention and filtering services, and a three-year premium-level maintenance and support plan.
Second.
Carol had the motion, Nikki had the second. Further discussion? All right, let's take a vote.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Salas?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Sodos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and then we have a second action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois approve the purchase of the network switches and associated five-year subscription from CDWG in the amount of $224,096.
Second.
All right, Carol had the motion, and Nikki had the second. Also on this one, any discussion? All right, you're on, Phyllis.
Pearl?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Riles?
Yes.
Salas?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Sodos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks for your work, MJ.
Thanks, it's gonna be a busy summer.
Yes, all right, thank you. Okay, Joel, if you wanna come on up, next we have the personnel report. Joel, anything you wanna share on the personnel report?
No, no, we're...
How about any questions from the board?
Joel, I just had one comment, there's someone, Sewell, S-E-W-E-L-L, who's retiring. Her first name starts with an E, so that was just a typo, it's Elisa, not Lisa.
Oh, I think we made, I'm sorry.
And just the version we have, it said Lisa, that's all.
Yeah, mine doesn't, but we'll make sure it's corrected. But thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, that might be just the one on the one that the board has, but maybe the other one that has.
But again, we'll make sure that's correct, good catch.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions? All right, before we take the motion, the motion doesn't make sense with our superintendent on the motion, so I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois approve the resignation of Eric Olson Superintendent effective June 30th, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so I had the motion, Gareth had the second. Any discussion? All right, let's take a roll call.
Waitovich?
No.
Salas?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Sodos?
Yes.
Pearl?
No.
Riles?
No.
Lubinski, yes.
Motion carries.
Well played.
All right, let's look at, now we have the other folks on the personnel report. Why don't we take the motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois approve the personnel report dated January 26, 2023, noting that the personnel report is based on the recommendation of the superintendent and not upon the board's direct knowledge regarding any of the specific individuals selected for employment.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Gareth had the motion, Nikki had the second. Any board discussion, or anything else from Joel? Okay, let's take a vote.
Salas?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Sodos?
Yes.
Riles?
Abstain.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
All right.
Good, can we take a break for five? We've been through a lot.
Yeah, all right, so why doesn't the board take five minutes, how about till 9:10? Or I guess that's seven minutes. There's a little lag before the feed restarts, so Dan just said, give them a few seconds. Okay, all right, thanks for allowing the board to take a little break, thanks for the suggestion, Gareth. Next, onto the consent agenda. Is there anything that board members want to pull off of that?
I'd like to pull off the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Park Ridge for crossing guards.
Okay. And then vote on that separately?
You're asking to vote on it, thank you, good.
Sorry, I think we should, after last month, we should have a discussion and a vote on it.
So you're not asking to remove it, you're asking to, to just separate it from...
Correct.
When, from the motion.
So just not loop it into the consent agenda?
That's right.
Okay, all right. We're thinking alike, Tom. One time, don't just... Okay, all right, all right, so then we're gonna take off the intergovernmental agreement, but anything else from the board? Okay, how about the motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois approve the consent agenda for January 26, 2023, which includes bills, payroll, and benefits, approval of financial update for the period ending November 30, 2022, and destruction of audio, closed recordings, none.
Second.
All right, Carol had the motion, Tom had the second. Any discussion on the consent agenda without the intergovernmental agreement? Okay, let's take, we had the motion, let's take a vote.
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Kennedy?
Yes.
Sodos?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, all right, so now let's talk about the intergovernmental agreement for the crossing guards. So let's, Gareth, you wanna start on that?
Yeah, I think, I'd like to understand from Adam what, what further discussions took place with the city since we last had a meeting, and I know when we talked about it back then, you know, it was the first that, that we were hearing about that topic as a board in terms of this agreement, and, and just trying to get a sense for what you heard and what you found out.
To be honest, the city, you know, came back with the same rationale as they did last time of they have to outsource to Andy Frayn now, and they feel that they want, they want the caution agreement to be in place, as was specified earlier.
So I reviewed this and looked into it a little deeper since our last conversation, and just for clarity purposes, the city hires these crossing guards.
Correct.
They incur the, the cost and the time and the effort to hire them.
Correct.
We don't get involved in that.
Correct.
The, where there's an intersection, where there, where we have a need and the city has a need, we split the cost 50/50.
Correct.
Where there's an intersection where we have a need, but the city has no need, we pay 100%.
Correct.
And it is true that in prior agreements, the numbers were a little different. They weren't exactly the same.
Yes, that is true.
Having said that, you know, I, I would love to go back to the old agreements, however, I, I don't, after looking at this one, I don't see how it's not equitable. I mean, we're splitting the cost for a intersection where we're sharing, we're paying 100% of the cost of an intersection that's just for us, and the benefit to us is we don't have the burden of finding these crossing guards, we don't have the cost associated with finding them and hiring them and managing them, and if, you know, one doesn't show up, we can yell at the city.
So you just pawn the cost off on the Niles people?
I mean, how do you, what do you mean you're pawning the cost off on the Niles people?
Well, they were paying for it, and now they're just, the increase just goes to the Niles people.
She's saying because these crossing guards are all in Park Ridge, and none of the Niles residents, so if it was in the city's budget, it would not be paid for by Niles residents. And now she's saying if it's in the D64 budget, then some of...
So you're saying the Niles, so you're saying that the Niles kids who walk to school, who live on Clara, that have to go to field, are paying, they're only ones paying for this?
No, she's saying that they weren't before.
Right.
Well, but, but they, but they...
Because it was in the city's budget, right.
So they were, so they were, so they were getting a benefit.
Yeah.
So now that we're pawning it off on them, we're finally making them pay for something that they didn't. I mean, it's really not, we're, we're not asking them to do, if, you know, there's certain areas of Niles that have to cross intersections that are Park Ridge-City intersections that are actually kind of both, one side you're standing in Niles, the other side you're standing in Park Ridge. So, I mean, if they weren't paying for it all these years, then they should be thankful that they weren't, and now it's just time that, you know, it gets split a little more equitably.
So, so let me, so the city negotiates...
And I'm sorry, that comes from a guy who grew up in the Niles part of District 64, so I'm not, you know...
Okay, Larry, thank you.
The city negotiates a contract.
Correct.
Then the city tells us, because we're not a part of that negotiation, we're not even in the room when that negotiation's done, here's what your fee's gonna be. Now, I realize this year it took place already. Do you think that maybe we should have a representative in the room? Do you think that maybe we should have a representative in the room when the city's negotiating the next contract, so we have some idea about what the city might be coming to ask us for? So that we're not, don't have our backs against the wall now? Because we had no voice. So we, now our backs against the wall, either we vote for this, and if we don't vote for this, maybe we don't get crossing guards.
So in, in, in respect to what Larry's saying, I'm not quite sure we need an actual representative there, but a breakdown of what the negotiation, the, the price negotiation was for these crossing guards earlier, so that we're not in a position where we have to make this decision with our backs to the wall, so that we could decide at that moment whether we want to engage, maybe, maybe we decide that we can get crossing guards cheaper. I mean, you never know, I mean, I don't know if that's, that, that's possible or the truth, but, you know, at least it gives us the opportunity to look into that. I think that would be a very good, and I, I appreciate that request, Larry.
Yeah, I, I recall only a few months ago, the city council, or at least, um, elements of it, you know, when, you know, we came to them and asked them for a permit to put, um, some temporary classrooms at field, that they said that they felt that their back was against the wall and they turned us down. So I think that, you know, there's some, some, if, if they felt that way, I'm sure they understand the, the shoes that we're filling today, um, being in a similar situation here, and not being consulted, you know, about this contract ahead of time. So my understanding is, um, I think an alderman did ask at a city council meeting whether, you know, if, if, if the school didn't, district didn't approve this, what would happen, and, um, the response I think they got at the time from talking with that alderman, they said that they, you know, that, that the city wasn't going to pull them, at least not immediately. And I think the other thing is, is that part of this too, is in the past, the, the city police department managed the process. And so in, in some ways, the city benefits more from outsourcing into a degree here because they now sharing the cost of that management of the program as well with us, not just the crossing guards. Because we're paying Andy Frayn for that management, it's built into the fee. So I think there's a few elements here that make me feel like I, I'm, I'm, I'm a no. But I think if, if, if we talk to the city and, and next year, we sat at the table if they renegotiated that, as they negotiate next year's contract, um, you know, maybe that's, that's the right approach, what Larry said when we're in the room. But I think, at least for now, I'm, I'm a no on this.
Would you, would you change your no if we modified this to a one-year agreement? If the city was amicable to that, so that we can have something in place? Uh, because I, I appreciate you said that, and aldermen told you that they probably wouldn't pull them, but, you know, we can't, there, there's seven of them, right? They, that one alderman might lose. So I'm just, you know, trying to make sure that we have security guards in place, and good ones.
Crossing guards.
Crossing guards, I'm sorry.
I just, don't bring up SROs.
I mean, if you guys want to talk about SROs, we could do that. I'd love to bring that up again.
You know, and Larry, I remember the summer, I think it was the summer you asked, you know, the city's talking about this, have you heard anything? And I asked Eric, and Eric did not. And so I think to your point, I, I certainly hear your perspective on that.
Denise, what a great idea. Maybe SROs can act as crossing guards.
Okay, all right, let's stick to the topic, Tom. Stick to the topic.
Yeah, that, that, that's my only point, is that I never want our child across the street without a crossing guard. We're not about that, but we should have some kind of voice.
And maybe, maybe we should have that meeting before we approve this. Maybe we should table it again. And send two representatives of this board to the city council to talk.
Well, it's not even made, so you don't even need to table it, so just put it on.
So maybe we just leave it die for tonight.
Nikki?
I'm just saying, do you think the city wants to pay more? Like, I don't think they're trying, you know, in negotiating this contract, they're not actively seeking to pay more, nor, you know, I don't think they're trying to swindle us. Adam, am I correct on that?
To be frank, I, I mean, I can only say what, you know, the conversations I've had with the city, so. I mean, the, the difference, yeah, I mean, my understanding is the biggest difference, and, and we did meet with the police chief several times last year about them struggling to get crossing guards at $15 an hour. So their rationale is okay, now they contracted out Andy Frayn, they're paying Andy Frayn more. To your point, they're not, they're, they're not, the police force doesn't have to deal with the management. And, but then to your point, the, it's split with us, so I mean, I.
We are splitting hairs. We need crossing guards.
And it seems like many school districts are using Andy Frayn. I mean, I, I hear that coming up, it's just where we are right now, so.
Andy, Andy Frayn is, is bringing in this, the crossing guards.
Correct.
We're no longer using police officers or.
It's, it's, it's Andy Frayn contracted service because of the market.
To be fair, to, to our constituents who are also the city's constituents, there, there's no, I mean, there's no funny business going on here. The, the city has a bill. They, they have to, you know, they're hiring a firm to produce these individuals for us. We pay 50% of it, we get to see the bill. It's not as if the bill's being paid in cash and they made a negotiation where it's going to cost us 100,000, and they come and tell us it's 200,000, so we can give them 100,000 so they don't have to pay. It's, this is all on the up and up, on the up and board, so the big question here is, do we not trust that they're good negotiators? Because, I mean, they're still footing 50% of that bill.
Yeah, I think that, I don't, I don't think there's any funny.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah, no, that's not the point. The point is the principle of putting us with our backs to the wall to approve something that we had no say on. That's the principle here.
I mean, we could always just hire our own security guards and not.
Crossing guards.
Or crossing guards and not deal with the city at all.
Right.
But then what burden does that put on our administration?
Right, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that. I'm saying so at some point, there's a relationship.
Then again, what is the C for if it's not for public safety?
But I want no part of getting back in that business again. We couldn't hire them in the first place, we can't hire them now. There, there's a, a long line out there walking the streets saying, please hire me as a crossing guard. I mean, that's not going to happen. I, the city's done us a favor here, they've done a good thing. I'd just like for them to hold hands with us when they do it next time. That's all I'm asking for.
I can back that.
I'm a yes vote on this thing. We got to have crossing guards. You know, this time, I think it was done a little wrong. Next time, let's do it the right way.
So how do we make sure that we do it the right way next time?
Oh, I don't know. I'll just go sit on the finance director's desk and.
We, we.
You're going to need something to deal with, Larry.
We leave a memo, we, we leave a memo for the next board, which will be sitting here in two years, to make sure that they look into this. I mean, I'm sure Adam will still be around in two years. So, you know, just make sure that Larry gets his hand holding the next time this happens.
Well, some of us will be around in two years for sure, so, you know, we can. All right.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District, District 64, approve the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Park Ridge for crossing guards.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so Nikki had the motion, Carol had the second. Anything else from the board? All right, let's take a roll call.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Ryles?
Yes.
Kennedy?
No.
Sodos?
Yes.
Lubinski, I'm abstaining. Selis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is two, is the approval of minutes. There is just from the December 15th regular meeting. Any board members have anything on that? All right, let's take the motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the minutes from the regular meeting on December 15th, 2022.
Second.
All right, so Larry had the motion, Carol had the second. Any further discussion? All right, Phyllis.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Ryles?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Sodos?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Pearl, Selis?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, um, Carol, uh, this was Carol's, um, motion on the agenda. Um, I asked Carol if she could lead the search on behalf of the board, if the board is choosing to do a search.
Right, so Denise asked me, I said, fine, um, if anyone else, you know, wants to do it, or if they have any other suggestions, just let us know. Um, it's my understanding that we're not ready to actually, um, make this action item tonight because Joel is still, um, waiting for additional information. He's, he got the ball rolling, but he, um, doesn't have everything that's needed. Um, so he had this memo included in, um, this agenda item where, for today's purposes, he wants us to know, like, what date can we choose to select to search firm, and then, um, we have to finalize a draft timeline.
So Carol, can I take a timeout? Have we chosen that we're searching for a superintendent?
Yes.
I have not. When did we have that discussion at the board table?
We, we have no choice. We don't have to vote to search for a superintendent. We don't have one. One just resigned.
No, no, I agree. An interim is an option.
We can just let our attorney speak.
We have to hire an interim.
Both right.
Yeah.
You need a superintendent for next year. The question is, are you looking for your next permanent superintendent? Or are you guys looking for interim superintendents to step in next year while you do a, a search next year? That, that's the question that you guys need to discuss. Either way, you need to do a search and determine who that person or who those people will be. Um, but, you know, the two schools of thought are, you go with an interim for a year, so you can start your search in September, October, which is the more, I'd say, ideal time for most school districts, because that's when you get the best candidate pool, or are you going to try to do it this year? Um, so you guys need to discuss that, but either way, at some point, you're probably going to need the assistance of a search firm, and the search firms typically will help you with the interim search, um, almost at, at a very nominal cost, if they know that there'll also be the firm that's going to help you with the true search, so you can negotiate those terms with them.
So I, I'd like to just weigh in. Uh, back in December of 2018, we had a superintendent who resigned.
Yes.
Uh, these were the, I was here, so I, we had these exact same questions posed to us. Uh, are we going to go interim? Are we going to go with, you know, a full, uh, superintendent? And back then, we were told that it's actually best to start the process, start it immediately, don't wait for even a day, hire your firm, and you decide whether you want to go interim or, you, 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 you do it simultaneously. You don't make the choice to go interim and that you, you.
I'm, I'm not giving my opinion on what's the best way, but I do remember the conversation. I believe the conversation was, well, let's give it a shot.
Right.
And see if we can find our next superintendent, and if we're not happy with the candidate pool, then we know the default would be to go to these interim teams that are there waiting to.
And tha, and that year, we were also seating four new board members in April of 2019. Uh, four of them who are sitting here today, I believe, right, or?
Uh, no, just, uh, Carol and I.
Okay.
Rebecca was seated then.
So, you know, and, and it actually, this is like, it's eerily like, you know, almost like deja vu for me, because we had a group of residents from a different side of Park Ridge come in and, and scream to us that we should absolutely not even consider hiring anybody and just sit on our hands until a new board gets seated. And again, we were recommended, that is absolutely not the right thing to do. We need to start this process sooner rather than later, so that we can get the best chance of hiring the best superintendent available to us. Whether that be, you know, a permanent one or a temporary one, whatever it be, uh, those were the recommendations given to us, and we took those recommendations.
Who made that recommendation?
The search firms.
The search, well, obviously.
And we did exactly, and we did exactly that. Well, the search firms are going to get hired either way. We're going to hire a search firm either way. We're not going to not hire one, so they don't have any benefit of telling you. They're, they're in the business of hiring superintendents, and they gave us advice as to what was the best position we can put ourselves in to get one. And seeing as if there's so many people in Park Ridge who feel that we hired an amazing superintendent, apparently, we did it right, because we ended up with Eric Olson. Who's, according to a major, a lot of members, they, they came and spoke today, we ended up with an amazing superintendent. Well, so the, the process works. The process, we should follow it as we followed it then. There's no reason to not do what we did then, just because a different group from another side feels that it's not in some best interest. I disagreed with, there's no reason to slow down a search for a superintendent.
Okay, I'd like to respectfully disagree with that comment, that we cannot equate this to be 2018, because the hiring environment in, in education is incredibly different in the post-pandemic environment. The rates of burnout in teachers, in higher ed, in, in all sorts of academic professionals has changed significantly. My concern is that a, the candidate pool at this juncture is not the same candidate pool it was in 2018. That being said, I agree that we do need to engage a search firm. I am in favor of considering an interim superintendent to obtain the best candidate. I'm not entirely disagreeing with Tom. If the right person comes along, you, you make a strong point, but I do think this environment, you cannot equate it to 2018. You can't say it's the same board either, so those two factors are different.
Yeah, the board means, means, whatever the makeup of the board is, doesn't matter, because that's not, that, that, that's not what should be determining factor.
This is the largest decision the board has to make.
Right, but just so you know, we were told the exact same thing in 2019, that, oh my God, there aren't a lot of superintendents out there, there's not good ones out there, it's going to be really difficult. We were, the, it's, it's, I'm literally hearing the exact same things, and if no one believes it, go back to the 2019 recordings and you'll hear it. It's the exact same thing we're hearing. Every time a parent came up, it was like, oh my God, I heard that in 18. It was the exact same thing. I just heard it from a, I just heard it from a different, I just heard it from a different side of the, of the aisle.
And Joel can speak to the, the attrition rate in, in education.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying we heard the same stuff back then. You might be right that it's worse today than it was in 19 or 18, but we heard the same stuff back then, and none of it, in my opinion, has any bearing as to whether we should slow down, or whether we should go full force looking for the best candidate. If it turns out that it's an interim, which goes pretty much against 90% of the people that even spoke today, who are upset that our superintendent left us, and that we are now, our district is being pushed back three years because a new superintendent's going to take, you know, time to get their bearings about them, we hire an interim superintendent who is not going to be here long term, we just pushed ourselves back another two years. The year to find one, and then the year, so it, it, these are, these are arguments that were given to us last time, that it is in the best interest of every board to hire a permanent superintendent, if they find one. If this board, whoever's involved in the hiring, which I will not be, because I'm not even running, so there's no chance I'm going to be here, but if this board feels that there is no good candidate, then at that point, they can bring a recommendation to the board and say, guys, we were, we interviewed a bunch of people and we don't think there's anyone worthy of this district, maybe we should hire a, then that's something we should discuss at the time, but it's not something we should be thinking about today. Today, we should be going full steam ahead, looking for our superintendent.
Tony?
I just want to add one thing. I, I think it would probably, like, 2018 or 19, I can't remember what year it was. You probably want the search firm here to have this discussion.
Yes.
Okay, so is there anybody here that disagrees that you're going to need a search firm to help you find an interim superintendent or your next superintendent? Does anybody think that you're going to do this on your own, or Joel's going to do it? Nope. Okay, so I, I think what, the first issue you guys need to decide is, when are we getting the search firms here? Are we picking the team we used last time? Are we putting an RFP out and then considering? And then, when you've decided who that search firm is, that is probably the best time to have that discussion, because they're going to tell you, just candid, like Tom is telling you now, like they told you last time.
But we need to have those discussions. I mean, to have an action item without any of that.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think this is going to be an action item today.
Well, it is on the agenda. You asked for it.
No, it's making the motion, and in Joel's memo, he says, items to discuss tonight, bring your calendars.
Well, then this should be an action item then.
To the extent that if we had the information by now, but he didn't receive it.
But we didn't have an RFP out.
We would, we, the companies would have been here to interview them.
We're not, we're not doing an RFP.
I, I want to bring up another thorn here, and I'm going to throw something right in the middle of all this conversation. Because of policies we have in this district, in this school board, I don't think the president can give the lead to another board member, because we have policies that say only the president can speak to the attorney. So I don't know how you would take the lead not being the board president, unless you're going to, you're willing to go out there and change a few policies in this district, just, just to do that.
Unless we all vote and agree that Carol can do that.
You can't, you can't do that.
I can't talk to the attorney, correct, without, so that one policy says that you need, um, it's the president who can talk to the attorney directly. So that's a thing, um, if I were to do this, I'd be talking to Joel.
It's superintendent, board president, or a board member delegated by a majority of the board.
Exactly.
Unless you change the press policy, that is what.
So guys, I think, I think we're, we're. So guys, I think, I think we're, we're getting muddled up here. Denise simply asked Carol to take the lead on this, and then at some point, we as a board need to either approve it or disapprove it.
I'm fine with Denise taking the lead, sorry.
I'm sorry, once we, once we approve it, if Carol accepts the offer, once we approve it, then she has all the right, all the same rights as the, as the board president would have.
But again, for tonight, and we're all clear, we're not taking action on anything tonight.
Yes.
Let's settle that. I think we just put something on the agenda just in case. You can always pull something. So what you guys really need to do is direct, I believe, Dr. Martin here, on what is the process. Go get the search firm we used last time, or go get proposals from all the search firms. There's really three big ones that, that you really should look at. And then you guys consider if you're going to interview, or just choose based on their papers, or, you know, just choose the one you used last time. So I think that's really where you guys need to direct him tonight. And then you got to find a time, whether it's, you're going to wait all the way till the next board meeting, or is there going to be special meetings? You guys, as you're well aware, if you were on this last time, you guys better start looking at your calendars because this process is going to go, and you're going to need several meetings together to do this, whether it's interim or not. The interim would be a little bit more truncated.
So step, step one, I believe, is we need to come up with a date for when we are going to hire a firm.
You know, before, can I just ask, you know, I hear you on that. Can I just ask Joel, so I think we used School Exec Connect last time, and can I just ask the experience with that firm?
Yeah, we had a good experience with School Exec Connect last time. They did a nice job. As Tony said, there are three main firms, BWP, School Exec Connect, and Hazard, Young, and Atia. If you look, those are the three that do the majority of the searches in the Chicago metro area. All three are not only local, but national companies, but all three have very good reputations.
They were very responsive from my, my experience with them. They were very responsive. They were, they were, they moved quickly. They, you know, they, if we needed to have a meeting, they were available, so.
So in, in our packet, right, with the memo from Joel, we have the proposals from those three firms, and, you know, I've read through them. I, I'd be interested in talking to BWP and HYA, having, having read all three of those proposals. So I'd be happy to meet next week and, and interview those two with a special meeting and then select one of those firms to go forward.
I'd want to interview all three, though.
I'd be fine with that too.
I think we should set a meeting. I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's what we did last time. We set a meeting. We invited them all here. They came in one by one. They spoke to us, and at the end of the meeting, we chose one. And then we moved, and then.
We took action.
We took action. We moved on with life. And then, and then they went out and did their job. Then they reached back out to us and said, okay, we need a date because we have this, 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 and this set up. And we all looked at our calendars, and like, you know, our attorneys are telling us, like Tony's saying, it's going to be, it's going to be some dates. It's going to be some times that we're going to have to make ourselves available because it's going to be busy.
I, I, do you want to do next Tuesday? Just throw it out there.
I would, I would like to do it sooner rather than later.
You know, can, before we get to that, can I just ask a few questions? And this is based upon the information Joel had. I just want to, so Joel, one of your points was the fees will vary on the parameters. Do we need to choose those parameters just so kind of, you know, if, if the search firm wants to collect data from the community, or, so do we need to choose that so we know, like, what the RFPs would be like?
So to Tony's point, I would suggest not only that we look at dates, but we give some basic parameters that I can show with the search firms to make sure they're ready. To Tony's point, if you were to conduct the search, what, you know, specifically some ideas of what you're looking, the timeframe of that, as well as are you open to looking at an interim, and information on that, so that they could come and present on both topics.
Yeah, they have a menu.
Is it possible to get that from our two-year ago, or four-year ago, search? We, we went through this before. We did this one. So if you can get it to, if you can get it to the, the rest of the board, it would give you guys a good idea of what that looks like.
Right. Are you going to have stakeholder community meetings, or are you going to do an online survey? Or are you going to do both? They give you layers of how vigorous and rigorous this process will be, and you get to choose. Yes, we want to do that, that, and that, and then that dictates the price. The prices between all three of these firms will be very similar if you pick the same things.
So it's like a menu?
Yes, it is like a menu. And at the end of the day, in my opinion, what it usually comes down to is the team that you get. They will send you a team, and how much you connect with that team, and how much confidence you have in that team to go out and do that search.
And having, seeing what we did last time will help this board understand what that, you know, what those menu items are, what they look like, what we did last time, you know, what we may want to do differently this time. It, it, it's going to give us a head start. Last time, we didn't have that. We had to sit and go through every single, do we want to do this? Do we want to do this? Do we need to do this? Seeing as if we had a semi-successful, you know, hiring the last time, we might want to at least have that as a baseline.
So can all of you meet next Tuesday?
No.
What date works for you, Nikki?
And then I just want to, I know it's, it says on here, Joel, three to four months. I just think the board needs to, just, how is that going to work with the new board coming on after the election? You know, are we going to be in mid-process? I don't know. It's just something the board's going to have to.
Again, I think, to Tony's point, I think that's one of the things that you'll have to discuss with the search firms is really if you're going to be doing it now, what is the timeframe at which you want to have it concluded so you can make decisions one way or the other?
If you want to go quicker, they're going to recommend cutting out.
Stakeholder.
That kind of process, the full process, if you want to expedite it. If you're going to do the full recommended three to four months, they're going to say, then here's all the steps that we'll put in place. Because you got to schedule all that stuff and give people's availability and.
Which I think cutting out stakeholders and our community members is just irresponsible of us as a board if we're going to do that. As I, as I recall, not being on the board, there was community input in the last search.
Yeah, it's about the same timeframe. It's just, what, a couple weeks behind, so.
We're like three, four weeks behind.
Didn't the law change as well? That's why, that's why I asked Joel to provide us with what we did last time because it'll just give us a good.
Tony, the law changed too, right?
I'm only available on the first.
Uh, I can do the first.
So are we wanting the first to have firms here? Is that what we're asking for? So we're asking Joel to contact firms tomorrow and ask them to be here in three days?
Oh, they'll jump. They'll jump.
Right, okay. No, I'm just, I'm just asking what the board is asking to do.
It's next Wednesday, right?
Correct.
They'll, they'll jump.
The, just, it's, I know Carol just said we're only a couple of weeks behind, but also the board, the law got changed. I believe that the boards are seated slightly later now. The county's wanted more time to count votes and things.
It's a little bit longer.
It's like ten days, I think. So we're effectively on par with where we were four years ago.
Do you want to do the week after then? Because that's pretty soon.
I think the first. February first is good with me.
I'm good with that.
We just need five, right, in the quorum. Four.
Me here or not?
Do we need Tony here?
I don't think so.
For that, for that meeting, I wouldn't.
It's not really a legal thing.
No, for that meeting, I wouldn't think so because we're just trying to.
What time? On the first?
Joel, what would you recommend? Would you recommend a six o'clock or a seven o'clock start?
It, it's really up to, you know, at this point, whatever is most convenient for the board. I think, as Tom said, I'd be shocked. I mean, I will obviously reach out to the three different firms to confirm, to make sure people can attend from them. But at this point, I would say it's for the board to tell me what timeframe, and then I'll work with them. Typically, what I've been told and what I remember from last time is usually about a twenty to thirty-minute presentation with Q and A in that per firm, and then the board, you know, discusses and talks about who they like.
I would, I would think that's about a three-hour meeting, minimum. So I would, I would be okay with a six o'clock start if people can get here at six.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know.
First, six o'clock.
And then we'll have to get a location. I don't know if we can just plan on here, or if there's, you know, we can kind of keep the board posted on that. And I, and I guess, it sounds like, Joel, you might need some direction from the board when you're talking to the firms. Now, for example, is the board interested, is going to be open to the possibility of an interim?
I, I personally, you know, I, there's, there's a stat out there that superintendents average tenure in the job from the Illinois Association of Superintendents or something like that. It's three-point-two years. People go through this all the time mid-year. I think we have, we've got to make the good faith effort. I think where we're at, we've got time. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving this, and there's always the option of employing a temporary person if we don't have that right candidate come along. So, so I think right now, we've got to move and see what the town pool is that's out there.
So your answer is yes, if needed? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying yes, if needed, but not, it's not what I'm looking for right now.
Okay.
I, I'm saying yes, if needed, but it shouldn't be our main focus. Our main focus should be to hire a superintendent the way it was last time.
And I guess I'm going to disagree with that. You know, we, I hear you on the data, on the superintendent, but we've had four superintendents in twelve years. And so we, we are spending money, we are going through this process, we're putting the district back, doing a new strategic plan with a new superintendent, and I think we, like, changing the dynamics, changing course, may be a helpful thing for the district. How do we do something different? So I would, I would be very open to an interim.
I'm fine with either way. I'm, you know, depends on who we find.
That's what I, whoever we find, an interim is fine. I would like to just see candidates and ask questions. I mean, I don't know who we're going to get. I don't know what the pool is.
Yeah, but I think the question here is, is do we want to, I think what Denise is saying is, do we want to go with an interim, or do we want to do what Gareth? So is, so are you, so, so you're saying that you would prefer to go, or are you saying that you would prefer to find a permanent, but you're open to a interim if we don't find something we like in the permanent world?
Right, because otherwise you'd have to go through it again.
Okay.
But again, this is a question you're going to want to ask during the interview. This is how this went last time. You asked the search firms that exact question, and let them, give them the answers, and then you guys heard the feedback, and then deliberated and decided.
Can I ask Joel a question? Sorry, Dr. Martin. How common are internal interims for school districts?
I don't have a lot of experience with that. Tony may be able to answer that better than I am.
Not common?
The, the problem with, it, it does happen. The issue with that typically is that person is then interested in the job. And then they become part of the search, and then when they don't make it, it, it doesn't feel real good. So it doesn't usually end really well.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing this out there.
Unless you were grooming someone and you knew that you were already.
That I do think we, there are exceptional members that are leaders here in the district that I would love to see some people tentatively apply.
With superintendent certifications. We do have some internal.
Well, that doesn't stop them from applying for the permanent job.
So I'm just saying that out loud.
Yes.
I'm off with that myself. My personal opinion, I'm okay with interim as long as, again, they'd come from the search firm. When we have this conversation with them, and, and I did it last time, and I'm like Nikki, I, I would not be in favor of anything that would eliminate the stakeholders. They had a big piece of it last time, and they should have a major piece of it this time. And so, but focus on finding us the right person, and if it doesn't happen because of the stakeholder thing, then we go to an interim, then we make sure the stakeholders have a big.
We had, we had a level of stakeholder in her last time.
Sure.
And I, I don't think anyone at this table would object to, you know, following that same.
Denise and I were involved too. And then the last question is that point you brought up with the delegation of authorities. We have to decide about that. I mean, Denise, did you want to just do it, or are we going to do the whole thing where I'm allowed to talk to Tony directly? So that's the last thing I think we have to decide.
Yeah, I was going to ask Tony, can I make a procedural motion right now that the board, you know, you know, authorizes the vice president in, in order to carry out the search? I can do a procedural motion right now to do that. So can I, so I move.
Before you do that, that doesn't mean that Denise is then excluded from talking to you about it. It just means we have two people that can talk to you about it.
With authority, right. Otherwise, you know, it's like.
Right. I want Denise to maintain, I want you to maintain the authority to have that discussion. But I, I just think it'd be great if there was two of you.
So, so I move that the Board of Community Consolidated School District sixty-four Park Ridge, Niles, authorizes the vice president to be able to call meetings, discuss with legal counsel, and set agenda items around, and, and talk with our search council, who we appoint next week, to discuss and, and action items around the hiring of a new superintendent.
Okay, Gareth had the motion, Phyllis had the second. So then, should we take a vote, vote, Tony? Okay.
Can we discuss for just a second?
Yes.
Just Denise, this is your, you're moving, you know, not moving in the sense of that, but like, you wanted this to happen. You asked Carol.
I asked Carol, yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, I just think this procedural motion allows it to happen smoothly, and now she can call the meetings when we need to, when we need to discuss these items.
I just didn't think, I want to be connected as connected with the search, and I'm, I'm running, and so it's time-consuming. The search is very time-consuming, so.
But she's ready also.
That's Carol's decision.
Let's vote. All right, Pearl?
Uh, yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Lubinski's, yes. Riles?
Yes.
Selus?
Yes.
Okay, Waitovich?
Yes.
Sodows?
Yes.
So motion carries. Carol?
Okay, so, and just, anything else? I just wanted to say, I think, you know, at this point, I feel like we are interviewing, we will be, I'm thinking how the boards decided, interviewing superintendents. They're interviewing the board too. So with the board changing, it's hard that they don't know who their bosses are. And so I'm just putting that out there. I think it's a tricky thing. I wouldn't want to be in a position where I don't know who's, who's supervising me.
I will get back to the Board of Education. I will reach out to the three companies. I will confirm that everybody can make it, and I will confirm the location for next Wednesday at six P M.
Oh, thanks. And then we'll have to put the public notice out and all of that, two days before. Okay.
All right, thanks for your work again on this, Joel.
And then eight fourteen?
Uh, yes, I was going to go back to the eight fourteen. Eric just had, the only thing he had to share is the upcoming meeting is February sixteenth. And so just put that on your calendar, and that was it.
Well, I think for that, Natasha's gone though, but there was this extensive FOIA request, and sometimes when we have these things, asking for board communications, usually we receive some type of, like, letter from our attorney, like, say, produce. Okay, so that's good. That's all I was asking. Okay, I didn't see you behind that screen. Thanks.
She's hiding. Okay, all right. So that is the, all right, anything else? Okay, how about any new business from the board? Uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Phyllis had the motion, Carol had the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. It is nine fifty-five, January twenty-sixth, and the board is adjourned.